So.
Um, yeah, I mean.
I'll send you.
That would be helpful ahead of time. You may want to turn it off until you need to use it, the buttons on the bottom. Because I just heard you put your.
Oh, did you really?
No, I heard you put your thing down.
Did you say, did you hear the end of my conversation?
No. I just said, did you really?
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Yeah, and then. We know we're all covered. I was like, who's gonna fit all of that?
It's making me like.
I don't know.
I'm just walking around saying hello.
Good morning.
It's like words. Because we just, you know, every time we have to change chairs or something.
I don't wonder.
But I just want to see their facial expressions.
Yeah. On my special shirt today. Wait, I can stare at them one day.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for February 2nd, 2019. At the outset, I just want to thank everyone for joining us here on a Saturday morning. It's very kind of you to be here early with us. Our hope for today, it's going to be a long day, but my hope for today is that we approach this as a collaborative process between staff and the council and the public to come together and really try to figure out a work plan that makes sense from both the staff perspective and the public policy perspective for the city that we can deliver on today and also deliver on this year, but also lay the foundation and cornerstone for future years as well. So with that, I'd like to invite everybody to please join for the Pledge of Allegiance. So real quickly, just for some housekeeping matters, I want to go ahead and I'm just going to go around real quick and introduce, I'm not going to, well, for introductions, just, I think what's really important to understand is when, for public comment, so our clerk, Judy Heron, is over there, you can't see, I can't see her, perhaps you can see her, she's waving at you. If you have public comment on an item, what, the way we're going to go ahead and go through this today is we're going to call within, within the council priorities of 2018, the prior council priorities, we're going to call that issue. Staff is going to go ahead and give a presentation on that. We're going to take public comment on it at that time. So if there are items that you want to go ahead and comment on today, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and please, if possible, fill out a comment card. If not, it'll be fine, I'll go ahead and say, does anyone have a comment on that? And you can come to it, but for an orderly process, it would be helpful if you could do that in advance. And then we'll just go ahead and proceed in that manner. Quickly, just for introductions, actually, I'm just going to let everybody since, go around the table, introduce themselves real quickly, and then we'll go ahead and start with the, start with the meeting.
Hello, I'm Mark Monzer, I'm the Community Development Director.
Good morning, my name's Nick Pegueros, I'm the Assistant City Manager.
And I'm Justin Murphy, the Public Works Director.
And I'm Starla Jerome Robinson, the Interim City Manager.
I'm Bill McClure, I'm the City Attorney.
I'm Catherine Carlton, City Council Member.
I'm Cecilia Taylor, Mayor Protem.
Betsy Nash, City Council Member.
Drew Combs, City Council.
Dave Bertini, Chief of Police.
Lenka Diaz, Administrative Services Director.
Sean Reinhardt, Library Director.
And Derek Schwager, Community Services Director.
Thank you. And my name's, my name is Ray Mueller, I serve as a City Council Member. This year, I have the honor of allowing, of being allowed to serve as mayor for the year. So there's one last thing I want to talk about this year, and that's that when we talk about a work plan, in the past, what has happened and sometimes happened is that people feel the need to go ahead and dive into issue item and start arguing the merits of that issue item. What I would really find detail, what I would suggest for today is actually, that actually shortcuts a deliberative process. What I really suggest for today is that when we're talking about goals for the year, we look at whether subject matters embraced by that issue are worthy of consideration this year, but we don't get too deep into a debate about what actually would come as a result of that, of that, of that, of that subject. And I think that'll make today, I mean, because very frankly, at the end of the day, we can't make a decision on that without a staff process. And secondarily, I think it's going to make the day much longer than necessary with no real end result, as a result of diving into that deep. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and we'll call all council members are present, we'll move to the first regular business item, C1, 2018 Work Plan Review and Direction. I'm going to go ahead and turn the meeting over to our City Attorney, City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson.
So just a few introductory comments on this section. What we're going to do now is review the council's actions from the 2018 plan and the status of the priorities that the council outlined at that point. And they really fall into four, what I'll call buckets, in process, completed, and that's our version of completed, and if the council doesn't agree with that, then please speak up, underway with a timeline of completion, and then ongoing, which, which I think means that we're recommending that we continue, the staff recommends that the council continue that as a priority so we can complete the work that's done. And then we have a fourth category, which is really, I think, best considered, not started priorities from 2018. And that doesn't, and so we've called it, we're calling for more council direction on that. And we've already heard a little bit from the council that some of those remain a priority and should be on the work plan, but we are asking that you give us direction on those items. So I'm going to turn it over to Nick Pegueros at this point to lead us through that discussion.
Thank you. I'd like to begin by just sharing staff's excitement that we're here today to work with the new council. It is really our first opportunity to hear this council's priorities for the coming year. And for the benefit of the public, I do just want to underscore the importance of today's meeting as well as future actions the council will take relative to the goal setting. This really does kick off our budgeting process. The feedback that we hear today and then the final action the city council takes relative to the 2019 work plan sets the foundation for how we plan our resources for the upcoming year. So we'll start today, I'll just go quickly through the agenda for the benefit of the public. We'll have an introduction, then we'll go through the work plan, 2018 Work Plan and Review Direction. We expect public comment, we're trying to make the best use of time that we have with you today, so we're targeting to finish the staff presentation here no later than 10:15 on this section. Then we'll move into the 2019 Work Plan Development and Prioritization, and we anticipate public comment on that one around noon, and then we'll do a wrap-up. So just to get started, purposes and outcomes. The purpose of today really is to provide staff with clear expectations for 2019. We realize that at the end of the session today, we will likely be in a sort of a draft mode, we'll have a preliminary perspective of the council, and then clearly, what we will do is we'll take the information that we hear today and prepare a recommended work plan for the council to consider at its next meeting, or at its meeting on February 26th. And the council will have another, and the public will have another opportunity to provide feedback and comment on that recommended work plan and find, and hopefully, we achieve an adopted work plan by the end of February so that we could begin the budgeting process. Outcomes, February 2nd today, reconfirm, as the City Manager, as interim City Manager noted, we're looking for the City Council to reconfirm 2018 work plan projects that will carry over into 2019. We're looking for new project ideas for 2019 and then City Council prioritization of the work plan. On February 26th, which is the council's regular scheduled meeting, we hope to, the council will receive a recommended work plan from staff, and then council will take action to adopt the plan either at that meeting or at a subsequent meeting, depending on the council's preference. So really, to talk about how this session fits into our overall budget, budgeting process, when we look at capacity, which is the use of both our financial and human resources, a good portion of the city's resources are devoted to baseline services. These are public safety, inspections, et cetera. When we're looking at work plan, these are projects that the council has, that the council desires for us to move forward with in many cases. This is the area where, as we look at sort of growth in, in the city staff over the last several years, most of the growth in city staff happens in this particular area to focus on, on new projects. And then finally, we have, with regard to our capacity, we always like to keep a little bit in store for those unanticipated new priorities, projects that come up. Several years ago, a great example of that was, or a great example of this is, is timing of EIRs that we may get from other agencies or other planning related items such as the Stanford GUP. Similar to last year, we are hoping the council subscribes to some ground rules on this, in this particular, and staff subscribes to some ground rules for this session. We're asking everyone, including staff, not to assume anything and to ask for clarity. And really, as, just to, just to kick this off, there, the, all of the information that has been presented to council is based on what we as staff understand was the council priority as of 2018. And we don't want to make any assumptions that this council wants to change things or what the council would like to change, so we are, we are very much looking for that direction from you. Sorry for the, the way the bullets came in. Acknowledge change. Again, I think there is a change both in staff, we have a new, or we have an interim city manager, we have some new department heads, folks are in different roles today than they were this time last year. Let's encourage everyone to listen, be courteous, keep it fluid and ask questions, so please feel free to interrupt any of us. If you need greater clarity about a specific project, please do ask. We have all of the department heads here, as well as many of our managers, the subject matter experts for the council and the community on these particular topics, and so we can ask and answer, feel free to ask, and we will answer as many questions as possible. We're going to create a bike rack for items that the council would like to take up at another time. We've called this various things in the past. And precision of language, if there's a question about acronyms, we tend, it's very easy for us to sort of fall into acronym language, CIP, which means Capital Improvement Program, EIR, GUP, all of those acronyms. Please do stop us and ask us for clarification if there's any question, and we are targeting a hard stop of 3:00 PM today. Anything else on that? Okay, very good.
Quick question.
Yes.
Have we thought about how we're going to approach breaks? At all? Bio-breaks or any other sort of breaks?
If anyone needs a break, you just, you just catch my attention, do this, I understand why, we'll take a break. And as we approach them, sure, we'll stop and have some, some lunch at some point, so I think we'll probably, I mean, obviously, we'll try to do that around, around the noon hour at an appropriate time when I think it makes sense, based on flow.
Before we begin, what we've done in the past is, we just sort of asked the council member and staff what is most proud of in 2018, what is, what the council's most proud of, or what we look forward to most in 2019. I, given this venue, this is a very different venue from prior sessions, I just would like to acknowledge that, we're set up in a very different way. I don't know if we would want to go through this now or just jump to the presentation and potentially come back to this, it's, it's up to the mayor.
Let's go ahead and go through the presentation and come back to it so we can have some time to think.
Yeah, great, thank you. Okay, so to kick everything off, as was discussed on, so just by way of process, to help orient everyone, this has been, this, we've, as you know, we've scheduled these meetings for, we've rescheduled these meetings a couple of times. We've used that opportunity to collect additional feedback from the public. There was a landing page that was prepared, and we have that information that was transmitted to council as well as posted to the landing page last night. We prepared an informational item for Tuesday, the 29th, this past Tuesday, and at that time, we heard a little bit about what the council would like to hear today. And as part of that, we've, we're providing a very quick update on our 10-year forecast to help orient everyone relative to the financials that we're looking at currently, as well as then just go into quickly the budget principles. So I'm going to hand this over to Finance and Budget Manager Dan Jacobson to walk us through the 10-year forecast.
Okay, good morning. So though it wasn't called out specifically at the City Council meeting where the CAFRA was received, the city does have $3.9 million of unassigned general fund balance as of the fiscal year ended June 30, 2018. I do want to just point out, though, that that is, so that money doesn't have a specific target currently, but it is one-time money. So what I'd like to do in this presentation is really give a more prospective outlook and take a look at what some of the structural factors are which should help guide decision making now. So the 10-year forecast is developed as part of the budget development process. Traditionally includes short-term, so one to five-year, and longer-term, six to 10-year. We have kind of collapsed it all into one 10-year forecast. That said, as it goes further out, there is more uncertainty, so it is likely to be less accurate further in the future. And to that point, forecasts are always wrong, so it's really a matter of how wrong they are. One of the things that we tried to do with the 2018-19 budget cycle was develop a forecast that anticipated that and tried to create a distribution of outcomes so that we had an idea of what might happen rather than just a simply a point estimate with no idea of what would happen on either side of that point estimate, knowing that that point estimate was going to be wrong. So we used a stochastic model, which is to say, we run a number of trials, develops a model, runs a thousand of them, and so we can take a look at what possible outcomes are. Again, this is based on the, the, what we put into it, so there is. Again, this is based on the, what we put into it, so there certainly, there is some uncertainty. We don't know how the future would react, otherwise we wouldn't have to do this. For the 2019 cycle, we have updated that again, so we have a couple updates on that. The economic downturn is not, wasn't set at a certain time in the previous cycle. It was assumed to begin 2021, or 2021, '22, or later in the previous one. We've moved it up a year, just based on current economic conditions, so it can happen earlier in the forecast. And the other is changing the way that the excess ERAF, or Education Revenue Augmentation Fund, which is a state mechanism to fund schools, we changed the behavior of that to more accurately reflect how that would work, rather than having 50% in every year. So just to go through some of the assumptions in the forecast, so some of the economic assumptions here are that there, an economic downturn is likely. It is not, we don't know when it will happen necessarily. The model does assume that it will happen, or it will, it is almost certain to happen during the course of the forecast. It has a 91% chance of happening during the 10-year window. And the way it operates in the model is that it will last no fewer than two years, and no longer than four, and be immediately followed by an economic recovery. And as mentioned before, that, it will not happen in the model sooner than the 2021 fiscal year, but can happen in that year, or in a year later. The other thing, as I mentioned, Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, rather than having it 50% in each year, which is not how it would actually happen if it were taken away from the city, it now, at some point, disappears and doesn't come back to the city. So it behaves as it, as it would if the state decided to change that funding. So for the model assumptions, so each component in the model, so it's broken down the same way that we look at our budgets, property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy taxes, those sorts of things. Each, each component of that has a base year, a midpoint change, so a growth or decline, variability in that change rate, so how spread out those changes could be, and a trend, which increases or decreases that over time. So if base year midpoint were 6.5% for property taxes, for instance, it might decline toward 2% over, not, over time, so 2% being the Prop. 13 cap. So that would be the long-term expected average. So many of these will change in one direction or another over time. So for many components, such as property taxes, there is certainly some uncertainty. For others, we know some things. So for instance, the city has settled contracts. We include the known information as deterministic, rather than having uncertainty around it. And just by way of, again, how the stochastic model works, it runs 1,000 trials. We create a distribution of all of those, and then we can take a look at some of the statistics. So later on, we'll be taking a look at some different percentile ranks of the outcomes. So on the revenue side, I wanted to highlight just a couple revenue assumptions here. So I'll run through them. The first is property tax. So the pessimistic is the 25th percentile outcome. This is the first year on these ones, so a 2.9% growth would be a pessimistic property tax outcome. The most likely is six, and 6.3, 6.25%. That is the 50th percentile. Optimistic, at 9.6% is the 75th percentile. So you'll see some of these other ones. Sales tax, quite a bit lower. It has been a very flat revenue source for quite a bit of time, so we don't expect it to grow at the same rate that property tax would. TOT, that's the hotel taxes, a little bit more optimistic, but not quite as high as property tax. And then all of the others operate similar to sales tax. So some of the preliminary results, and again, this is pending any changes, any direction that you give us based on assumptions. These are the revenues over the course of the current fiscal year, and then the 10 years following. The pessimistic would be the 25th percentile, optimistic 75th percentile, and most likely would be right in the middle there. So as you can see, it grows over time. Toward the end, you'll see quite a bit more divergence, and this is reflective of the fact that, one, it's a little bit more unknown, and, two, there's compounding. So the optimistic, or the more extreme cases are likely to compound over time. On the expenditure side, just highlighting a couple categories here, so salaries and wages. The pessimistic, and not to make a normative term here, but this would be just the, the 75th percentile of possible outcomes there. So that's, so it's flipped in this one, in which case, the pessimistic would be 75th percentile of expenditures, and optimistic would be 25th, reflecting that it's a better outcome for the city if expenditures are lower while revenue is higher. And I do just want to point out that for salaries and wages, while we have 3.5% for pessimistic, 2.8% for most likely, and 2.3% for optimistic, this is following the current contracts, given that they're settled right now. So you'll see that some of those up there, operating expenses, contract services, the midpoint, the most likely is 3%, that reflects what we expect the Bay Area CPI to be, so we expect those are, yeah, go ahead, please.
Sorry, can I ask questions now, or do I wait till the end?
Yeah.
Thank you. I just, and I, you know, we were talking about, like, making sure there's clarity. When we talk about salaries and wages, are we talking about salaries and wages, the pure salary and wages, or, because as you know, when we go through these negotiations, a lot is also including healthcare, shoes, you know, all these other things that get factored in. When you come up with these numbers, are you including the whole package, or simply the hard numbers in what we pay?
So in the model, they're all broken out. So for instance, salaries and wages is one category, benefits is another category, pension, unfunded liability, each of these is broken out as a different category in the model. I didn't highlight them here, but they are all considered.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was clear, that this is including everything.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So for procedural purposes, what I would like to do, and that was, that was fine, that's a great exchange, but what I would like to do is actually just go forward, finish the presentations, and then do a round of questions. No, it's fine, that was great, but I think that, because we could probably all start diving in.
Is that a little bit, oh, wow, loud, okay. All right. So, so the expenditures is the preliminary results. Again, you'll notice that pessimistic is the higher bar on this one, optimistic is the lower. In the very first year, they all look very similar. They are a little bit different, but that's just reflecting that in, most of the information closer to now is known more accurately than information further in the future, and a larger number of the components in the current year are known, whereas things six, seven, eight years out into the future are not known. So combining those, so I will say that, just by way of combining statistical distributions, it wouldn't be accurate to say that a 25th percentile revenue, plus a 75th percentile expenditure, would be a 25th percentile outcome. So I'm just providing a most likely result, so this is the 50th percentile, if we compare revenues minus expenditures to find net revenue. This is the outcome as of now for the 10-year forecast, including the current year. As you'll see, there is an operating surplus in all years, currently projected. It does decline over time. That is reflective of the fact that an economic downturn would likely reduce revenues, or at least slow growth. This slide is really just getting into some of the nitty-gritty details, mostly that's so that we can be transparent about how the model works, also because I'm kind of a nerd and like these sorts of things. The economic changes follow generally, so that is the downturn year, the downturn length and recovery length, they follow a uniform distribution, so each outcome is equally likely. The growth rate components are, follow a normal distribution, so this is the bell curve that you might remember from school. The sigma on those is between 2 and 5, depending on the component, signaling some have, the higher the sigma number, the greater the variability, the greater the change, the greater the distance between outcomes in a given, between trials. The downturn distributions operate somewhat similarly, so those are still normally distributed, again, the bell curve, but there are some cases that behave a little bit differently. Property tax is set to be zero growth during a downturn, and salaries and wages are also set to be zero growth during a downturn, and those are deterministic, so there's no variability in those. And then recovery follows a slightly different outcome, so while most years have the ability to be either positive, negative, and changing in degree of positiveness or negativeness, the recovery is strictly positive. So those will be positive growth rates for those recovery years. So that's, I will cover the budget principles next, but should I open it up to questions about the financial forecast and outlook at this point?
Do you guys have questions now? No? All right, go ahead, go ahead, proceed.
Okay. So the next thing I want to cover is the 2019-20 budget principles. So in the 2013-14 budget year, budget principles were developed. Since then, each year, staff has iteratively changed them, depending on what goals, or what, what the council has given us direction on their priorities, and just as a matter of making sure that they're clear, and help guide staff for the budget development process. So I will present the budget principles with changes, staff recommended changes in red. We are seeking your affirmation on these, but they are not set in stone. You can and should give us direction on what you would like to see changed, if you would like to see any changes in these. So I don't want to read through them, just by way of not reading a slide, but I will point out that the change here in red is for the first category, promoting the city's long-term fiscal sustainability, and it is just to add that we would actively pursue strategies to reduce pension costs as opportunities arise. And that's really just an affirmation of the council's reserve policy for pension funding. It's not actually, not a change in direction. In the next category, enhance and maintain core city services and infrastructure, staff doesn't recommend any changes. In the third category, staff also doesn't recommend any changes. And in the final category, communicate the city's financial position, staff recommends two changes. One is to break this into two bullets, and the second is to add a section providing additional finance-related communication, such as the budget in brief, which you may have noticed from, may have seen in your mailbox from last year. And then the second part is just to explicitly call out that the city wishes to document, review, and maintain proper internal controls with transparency. So that's all that I have for budget principles. I will take any questions or guidance on how to adjust these, however.
So first off, I just want to say it was an excellent presentation. I really appreciated the detail in the presentation. What I do want to do before we ask our questions, is on both items, on the budget principles, and also the presentation on the 10-year forecast, to see if there's any public comment. And you can just raise your hand if you have.
Sure.
Go ahead and come to the, come to the lectern.
Ron Shepard, let me speak as a private citizen, although I am chair of the Finance and Audit Committee, so I'd like to make a few comments that we have discussed at the committee. One, we applaud the movement for a 10-year forecast. We think that the city should make a bigger attempt at long-term forecasting on all issues, not just finance. We reviewed the 10-year forecast. Our concern, or our glee, if you can put it that way, was, with a lot of private companies, you go along, and all of a sudden, you put your hand in the cash barrel, and you come up with a fingernail full of slivers, and we found that's not going to happen here. We saw you had cash to move forward. On transparency, we are extremely concerned about transparency for capital expenditures. We've issued recommendations that we haven't heard back on, and the capital expenditures are going to affect your cash flow. So I don't know if that's been taken into account here. There's one huge expenditure that we think you don't have a grip on, not because you're not capable of having a grip on it, but because you're not getting good information, and that's pensions. PERS is discounting pension costs at 7%. The pensions are only funded at 70%. That's not sustainable, and I'm waiting for the big hammer to hit, that you've really got to put a lot more money into pensions. I've suggested that the actuary compute the unfunded pension liability using differing income assumptions, going from 7% down to zero, so you know exactly what the range is of your liability. Because our feeling is, you need to pay pensions that you've promised, but you need to look ahead and see how you can change them to make them financially sustainable.
Thank you, Mr. Shepard.
Did I leave anything out?
We, so-
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Levin.
And so, and so the public knows, for today's hearing, because we have so much to get through, I'm limiting public comment to two minutes per speaker.
Okay, and so, first of all, I am here mostly representing Complete Streets Commission. I want to make sure that if I comment on the budget, that won't take away my time to make, okay, terrific. So Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, and I have two quick comments on the budget and priority as an individual, not representing Complete Streets Commission or any group. And the first, point one of two, is I know that the city has been getting some comments about staffing level, in terms of how to do staffing in order to be financially prudent. And my observation, particularly looking at the transportation issues, is that staff turnover and being understaffed has really hampered the city's ability to deliver on council's priorities over time. You know, we have projects for safety, we have projects relating to parking, we have a variety of things, and something gets planned, and then it doesn't get done, and it doesn't get done because there isn't enough staff to do it. And therefore, I would encourage the city to be prudent about staffing, but not to deliberately understaff, because that's not delivering what the council wants, and what the community wants. So that's point one of two. And point two of two, if, and this is more about capital, which is that one of the big challenges in the city over the last year or two was deciding what to do with a gift that came forward. That was for a library, but that also had 20 or 30 million dollars of strings that the city would need to add to be able to create this. And the challenge in handling this is that there was no way of knowing, there wasn't a nice, clean summary of, here's the city's top three or four big capital priorities, so we know if this is coming into the queue, this is what we need to take off. And so I would encourage, so there is a CIP process, but it's very, very fine-grained. It has many different things of different sizes. So I would encourage a big capital priority prioritization process, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Levin. Ms. Bramlett.
Lynn Bramlett, I have a general observation about the presentation so far. It seems a setup to a discussion later of spending priorities, but to me, what's missing is a lot more detail regarding our current capital improvement project situation. You know, specifically, we have an awful lot of projects that are unfunded, and the status is unclear, and when, when we're going to get to them is unclear. And then I think the public would also benefit from more visibility into the capital improvement process. I have carefully read the budget documents, and first of all, they refer, to quote the community's vision as justification for the spending, but that vision is never detailed, and I don't believe we have a shared vision for our town. I think, you know, you can't base it on that, but what, what we need is more visibility into the current process. As I understand this document here, it's basically the staff submits a form, and then a group of Menlo Park employees, staff, meet together to decide, and then it goes forward. So I'd like more, you know, as part of our discussion today, I think it would be very healthy and helpful for our overall community towards a collaborative approach, look into how we're even going about this. So I just see a disconnect between what we've just heard, and kind of the elephant in the room, if you will, with what I see in here.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Hayward Robinson, Menlo Park, former mayor. And it's nice to see you all here, doing this, brings back memories. I will, first of all, support Adina's comments wholeheartedly. We have to be prudent with who we hire, but we can't just say, no more staff. And I'd also like to support Lynn's comments. I think a lot of us have felt, over- I think a lot of us have felt over the last several years that there was not enough community and citizen and ownership of where we're going. And there are examples throughout, things that we have done through the city, the specific plan being one, where the, an initial process that was very genuine and very citizen-driven got off the rails in actual implementation. And so I'd like to see us step back a bit, make sure that the city council, as representatives of the community, really is driving this boat, this ship of Menlo Park. Thank you.
Ms. Frye.
Patty Frye, Menlo Park resident and former planning commissioner. I'd like to echo what several of the speakers already have said, and that is, I think that there needs to be some overriding goal that's very visible and obvious so that there can be a lens through which all these priorities are driven. My sense has been that the idea of Menlo Park becoming a job center has been the overriding goal in the past, and I would just suggest that many of us believe that a town with a high-quality residential life is what we should be striving for. It's livable, safe, diverse, sustainable, vibrant, engaged. It's a great place to raise a family and a great place to retire. So I think that kind of lens ought to be, one way we check whether or not the priorities that we're going through are supporting that overall umbrella. It would mean to me, things like, do we have streets that are safe and functional for residents? Do we have transparency, accountability, fact-based, data-driven decisions? Are we financially responsible? I love that we're now finally looking at multiple scenarios of a long-term financial scenario. I mean, that, that's so critical, and it's the way almost every business and organization that lasts does its planning. And that we are driving towards planned growth. We've had some plans before that were driven by visions that the community was involved with. A lot of the assumptions at the times, so at the time those were developed, are no longer valid. The specific plan, for example, was developed in the recovery time of a deep recession. I think things have gotten off the rails, and I think we need to reset and look at those and make sure that they're working towards this overall quality of life for residents goal. Thank you.
Okay, so just real quick, I want to focus back in, so comments we're looking at right now relate to budget and relate to, relate to the budget presentation and to the budget model and forecasting. So we're going to have comments later on as we go through sections, other sections, but if, I just want to make sure folks understand what we're commenting on now, so that way we can go ahead and move through. But all the comments have been very, very, I appreciate all the comments, but really want to focus down in on the subject matter that we're in now. Ms. Bins.
Okay, Mayor Mueller, Mueller, I'll do my best to keep it focused. I did want to get a better idea of that 3.9 million unassigned general fund. I'd like, you know, just more details on the source of it, how those monies arrive. I've heard of some cities where funds can time out in other, you know, funds and then be dumped into a general fund. If that's the case, I'd like to know, you know, where it's coming from. And then I'm assuming development impact fees fit in to a budget, and if so, I definitely would like more transparency as to, you know, obviously what's being collected from specific projects, but also how those monies are actually being spent in the areas that are impacted, because I see a gross disparity, at least I think there is, and if there isn't, I would love to see financially, you know, how that pans out. And it's quite possible that some of our budget surplus is actually money that should have been allocated, you know, otherwise, but I don't know. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Any other comments on the model forecast or budget principles? Okay, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and bring it up to council. Are there any questions on the model forecast or budget principles presentation? Yeah, Ms. Nash.
So I'd like to see a change to the, under the managed staff capacity to efficiently deliver services to the community. On bullet number three, to add in, so it says proactively manage the loss of institutional knowledge through, and then add documentation of procedures, practices, and processes, and succession planning, as it continues. So add a phase about the documentation of procedures, practices, and processes. I'd support that.
Is there consensus on the council to add that? Yeah, that's fine. Is that staff, staff agreeable to that?
Absolutely, and we'll bring that back for council action on the 26th.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding the presentation? Ms. Taylor.
I have some questions, and going back to Ms. Bins' questions as far as where the undesignated funds are coming from. I know that maybe a year ago, there was probably around $5 million in undesignated funds, and now you said it's 3.9 million. So can you talk about where the money comes from out of the budget and then where it's going?
Sure. So I don't recall the number at the end of the 2017 fiscal year. I believe it was lower, though. I believe we actually increased the undesignated fund balance over the course of the last fiscal year. Oh, sorry. But so that is the accumulated difference between operating revenues and expenditures, so it comes from a variety of sources. It's simply the difference between what we collect and, from our revenue sources that go to the general fund and what we spend from the general fund. So that could be anything from, for instance, a property tax dollar could come in and be put into the general fund, but if it's not spent, it will stay as part of the undesignated fund balance.
So is the, in the budget, is it obvious that the TOT taxes or the HOT taxes are going in there into the undesignated fund, like the source, a clear?
So the sources are all broken out, and those are included both in the forecast and in the budget document, but the undesignated fund balance is really just money that hasn't been given a purpose yet.
Thank you.
You want to suggest a... Yeah, go ahead.
Can I add that the impact fees that were referred to are segregated away from the general fund and can only be used for specific purposes? So there are no impact fees in the $3.9 million.
So the question that we're getting to is diving down into sort of how the budget reporting takes place, and it looks to me like the staff, the staff language around documentation, is there, is there somewhere within the budget principles that we can sort of embrace this, embrace this, this, that, how we're going to go ahead and report this out transparently?
If I may, Mr. Mayor. The budget document, as you may all know, is a rather lengthy document that consolidates not just the major fund, the general fund, which is the host or the recipient of all unrestricted money. So this is money that has no legal restriction to its use or policy restriction by the city council. Property taxes, hotel taxes, sales taxes. It's also, the general fund is also the fund that pays for the vast majority, off the top of my head, well over three-quarters of the city's expenditures for operations, not including capital. The budget does report each distinct fund that is restricted by other council policy or legal restrictions imposed either by the state of California, a grant recipient, some type of binding document that specifies the revenues used for a specific purpose. Off the top of my head, I think we have about 50 of those funds, each of them being discreet and individual, many of them not having a tremendous amount of activity, but several of them providing a very significant contribution to our capital improvement program. So if I understand the question correctly, the budget does speak, it focuses primarily on the general fund. I think that that is a, that for a, to understand the city's health, it's critical that we focus a significant amount of attention on the general fund. Many of the issues that have been raised today relative to, and prior relative to pension costs, risks of revenue decreasing in the event of an economic downturn, many of those are borne by the general fund. So we do focus there, but we also have information on the other funds.
So if I can suggest, I think that the concerns that have been raised on this, on this actually are addressed in the amended budget principles to provide additional finance-related communication to enhance the public access to city financial document. That's the goal, and the questions that are being asked by the public with respect to this type of fund, I think we can go ahead, take that under direction at staff level so when the budget does come out, the difference is well defined and communicated to the public what is there. But I think that we actually, and it's to the public's credit to be asking the question for clarification, but also the staff's professional credit to have identified that we're going to continue to work in the area to make sure that we provide a little extra information to the public so they understand it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just one more piece that I believe is worthy of consideration, going back to some of the comments that were submitted through email or the system that was set up for the priorities, is that there's a concern about impacts in communities that are not being reinvested. And so is, if, did future discussion, if there is some way that we can look at the budget and really see where money, the revenue is coming from, from a certain area and how much is actually being reinvested? Because if we don't start discussing it now, it's just going to keep coming back to us. So just something I think is worthy of consideration in the near future. Thank you.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, just so I can add up and make sure I'm clear in what sort of we're additionally asking for, for staff. So when it, when, with regards to the sort of, if we're looking at a surplus, and there are many things that go into the general fund total, but if we're sort of comparing year to year, obviously, and if there is possibly some growth, like specifically going back to where that growth is coming from, so if it's like TOT, and I have no doubt that this is all there, because I'm sure everything is there, but just being a little bit more transparent and clear, this has, like, if there is some additional funds, if there is growth, then it's because very specifically there was $1 million more in property taxes collected, or there was, you know, $250,000 more, or that these were the areas that had the greatest growth and thereby could be seen as being, you know, large contributors to that surplus.
So we do outline those, both in the budget document as what we prospectively believe to be the case, what we expect to happen, and then also when we do the review at the end of the year in the CAFR, those sources are identified.
I'm just saying, like, is there a way to be, like, sort of more transparent or pull that out in some way? I, like I say, I have no doubt that it's there, but if there is this question that, that if it's there but no one finds it, then is there any value to it being there? And so that, that's just my, you know, my issue in trying to be responsive to what, at least what some of the public comments we're narrowing down in on.
So I, I agree. I think we have a direction to staff to think about that, but I think in terms of the actual discussion we're having now about the budget principles, we have it, like, we have it. So we've identified one issue that would fall under that. So I agree with you, and I think you guys have, I think staff has heard a discussion about that, and I appreciate it. The question that I have now is though, there's a separate issue that I think, and it's a question for us, these are our budget principles. So to be clear, these are our budget principles. We're amending our budget principles, what's important to us, and staff had these recommendations, but it sounds like there is an issue around equity in terms, and whether or not we want to discuss equity in terms of revenue expenditure as a budget principle going forward. I think that's what I'm hearing from my colleague, and so I think that how that is defined, it actually, I'm not sure we can define the language around that today, and I would actually think, but if there's consensus that we want to have a budget principle around that, that we would go ahead and make suggestions to staff to come back with us at the later time with some language around that. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. I think it's fine, I think it's a great policy statement addition that also would address some of the concerns that we've heard over the last year, so that would be great. Any other questions for, or discussion points on this topic?
Hi, could I ask for some clarity on the statement you just made with regard to creating a budget principle around equity and kind of defining what you mean by equity?
Equity means that every neighborhood has an, has an equitable interest in how, it's, it's fair, it's a fairness. It means we all have that based on what we're looking at, that every, that there's equity in the way that those revenues are being spent citywide. Does that make sense? So you would be...
By neighborhood?
But it's, well, it's by, it's, yeah, it's by neighborhood, yeah.
Okay.
So, or you could do it by district, or you could do it by, you're basically looking at, and I'm looking at my city, my city attorneys, because I think they're going to weigh in on what that language looks like, but really, it's just, it's a, it's an underlying fairness. So, so let's go ahead now and, and I want to make sure everyone agrees in agreement that's the definition we're looking for. Yeah? Yes, okay, great.
So if I may, we will, just to be clear on this particular point, we will return to council with recommended language as well as practical implications of that language.
Right, and I want to be, and in doing so, at least I'm making the statement for myself, not for the council, but in recommending that we do that, I'm not making a statement about how anything's been done in the past, or that there's somehow something that's not, what we're saying is, is as a council, this is a value we want expressed in our budget priorities.
Yeah, if I would just add, I mean, I very much appreciate that that is a tall order, because what is fair, when there is no sort of equality in situations, right? If we're looking at it by districts, the districts are, and neighborhoods are fundamentally different, and their needs are different. And so the, the needs as far as infrastructure for Santa Cruz Avenue are different than, you know, a residential street in West Menlo. And so I do appreciate that, like, while we're saying as principles, like, equity is important, because I do think it responds to concerns that have existed in the community for a while. We are, you know, we appreciate that it is not you coming back and saying, everything has to be equal, like, everyone has to get three oranges, and then that makes the world better. But some sense of the, you know, an understanding of that concern that has come up in the past.
You guys know, we're not, it's a budget, it's a policy discussion at council to determine whether or not it's equitable, but we're stating it as a priority of ours. All right, so let's go ahead and move on to the 2018 work plan review and direction. Who's going to be making the staff presentation? Mr. Pegaros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're now moving into the 2018 work plan update. The purpose here today is to provide the council with an update on the work plan. The work plan is basically broken out into perhaps three or two major areas. The first are policy as, and outreach priorities or initiatives. The second is our CIP projects. The outcome here is that we are seeking city council, that the city council confirm that the work plan carryovers from this year, from 2018, continue into the next work plan as well as CIP prioritization. So to start, let's see here, oh, so, I'm sorry, oh, let's see. So types of projects, again, policies and programs, studies, infrastructure. The 2018 work plan had 59 projects. 18 of those are completed or estimated to be completed by the end of this fiscal year, June 30, 2019. 12 are anticipated based on the amount of work that has already been invested and where these projects are in their sort of development are estimated to continue into 2019-20 unless the council gives us direction otherwise. 19 of the 59 projects were incorporated into the five-year capital improvement program budget, and then 12 of the 59 require city council direction so that we know where the, whether the council would like the priority to move forward, and if so, what necessarily the scope would be on that project. So we'll start with review of the completed projects, and then we'll move into the other areas. areas. And I'm going to transition now to a different document here, if I can see it. There we go. Okay. So, on the screen here, we have what, the attachment A that was included in the council informational session, item that was presented on January 29. These are the 2018 work plan items completed as of June 30, that are, will be completed as of June 30 of 2019. To start, the, we have the name of the project or the title of the project, the lead department. If you have any questions about these particular projects, we have the directors here to answer those. But what I do want to highlight is that 2018 was a very productive year. The city council had given us a number of several, six high priority projects. We anticipate, having completed or will complete by the end of the fiscal year, three of those high priority projects. In addition, over the course of the year, we took on a number of the other city council projects. You'll see here 10, I'm just going to scroll down going all the way. And so, again, what I would like to highlight is that many of these projects, you'll see completion dates sometime in the future, and unless the city council gives us direction to change course, we will continue forward with that. So, at this point, I would ask if the council has any questions on the projects that we anticipate being completed, and the department director can answer those specifically.
These are items one through, one through 16. Okay. First, let's go ahead and see if there, is there any public comment on items one through 16? Ms. Bramlett.
So, my general comment is it would have been helpful for these projects to have had at least a column with the allocated budget, how much was already spent and what remains. And some of them, I'm wondering what they are, like the citywide communications program. Well, you know, many people are calling for a better public engagement process, so, you know, when can we get more visibility into some of these and possibly try to influence them before a council meeting where, you know, it's kind of late in the process?
Any other comments on items one through six, 2018 work plan completed? One through 16, I'm sorry. Ms. Willison.
Good morning, council. First, I want to thank you again for prioritizing the Safe Routes to School program last year, and it's great that this is wrapping up. I do want to ask that you kind of keep it top of mind and even expand what Alta is currently doing with that project. It's, they're trying to hire a part-time coordinator to fulfill the terms of this project. I would encourage you to expand that scope and make it a full-time position, and even dedicate that to more bike and ped, eight to 80 programmatic and even infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes.
Hi, Katie Berusi, representing Complete Streets Commission. We had three things that we collectively agreed should be a priority from our perspective, and one of them was the continued, the institutionalization of a Safe Routes to School program. So, not a consultant, not something that's just sort of renewed, not something that's just like, we're going to create some maps and we're going to call it done. We felt really strongly that Palo Alto's model is exceptional. They engage all of the community stakeholders, they have monthly meetings, and they have staff, like, permanent city staff who actually run the program, and we find that that would be a really important thing for the City of Menlo Park to do. So, we want City of Menlo Park not just to be like, done with Safe Routes to School, but to continue that. Thank you.
Any other public comments on items one through 16, work that was completed in 2018? Yes?
Hi, my name is Manuel Paz Arribas. I'm a fellow neighbor of Menlo Park, and I'm here on behalf of a group of parents of Ensignal School. We're trying to get safer routes to the school from both sides, from Atherton and from Menlo Park. And I'm here today, I brought a document to present a proposal to build some sidewalks along Laurel Street and Ensignal Ave, if possible, to have a safer route to school. I mean, right now, the sidewalks along Laurel Street end abruptly at Glenwood Ave, and there are no sidewalks in the Menlo Parks, Menlo Park parts of Ensignal Ave. And so, the students are forced to walk in the back lanes, which are often cluttered with trash, recycling cans, cars, or vegetation. So, it's not safe for them to walk, especially it's young children, I mean, ages five to 10. And, yeah, and another thing we've noticed, it's there's often children wandering off toward the car lane, especially after school hours when they're tired, and it could be very dangerous, because it's a busy street, because there are many cars trying to pass through or going to school to pick up children, and, I mean, we just want to avoid accidents.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment on items listed on the 2018 work plan completed, one through 16? Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to bring it up, okay? Yes, Ms. Grob? It's one, excuse me?
One through 16.
It's just items one through 16. Work plan completed.
I just would like to put in a plug for the monitoring and speaking up on the Stanford-GUP planning process. It's going to have a huge, huge impact, bigger than anything we're going to do on our own for housing and transportation and sustainability and quality of life, so.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we're going to bring it up here for questions about that, and Mr. McClure, I'm recused on the Stanford-GUP issue. So, should I, I'm not sure how I do that with a grouping like this.
If there's some discussion, then you should recuse, step out, but there may not be any specific discussion on that item. It may just be leaving the list as is.
I have a general question I'm going to ask of staff on this, but it's general to all topics. It appears to me that there are some topics listed on the work plan completed list that are still ongoing. An example like that would be Willow Road, US 101 interchange. Why, why is that still, why is that the case?
So, the approach that was taking, sorry, taken for this list, and there's kind of the heading up at the top, 2018 work plan completed as of June 30, 2019. So, we took a perspective look at this, and some of the dates to the right are identified. So, the major milestone with Willow 101 is that it's on track to be completed in May, and so, we're just following those sort of assumptions of the projected completion date, but there-
You're very polite, Justin. The answer would have been, because, Row, you're not reading, right? Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other, any other question, any other questions about this list from council members? Ms. Taylor.
I have a question about the Willow Road. Is that will, prior to completion, will the, or I should say, when it's completed, will Caltrans have looked at the streets that connect to Willow, the Willow Road overpass, so specifically New Bridge to the overpass, and then also Bay and Chester to the overpass? Because they need to be repaved, those areas need to be repaved. So, I'm not sure if that's a part of it or not.
If it's a matter of the repaving, we can look into the exact scope of work of the repaving, get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Nash.
I would love to learn more about the development of a citywide communications program and what's, what that is.
Okay, I'll try to speak to that. Clay Curtin, Assistant to the City Manager. This started last spring with the hiring of a consultant to evaluate our current communications and then come up with suggestions and best practices to implement as part of a new program. I don't have the completed consultant report yet, because there's been delays on my part in getting them data that they need about all of our different social media platforms, website analytics, email messaging, and open rates and information. So, that is nearing completion, but not done yet, and will probably yield in the final report some recommendations going forward.
So, this is how to communicate, how the city communicates out to the community?
Yeah, it's all external communications.
Councilmember Carlton.
I don't know if you have the information in front of you to ask, to answer the question, but if you don't now, please email me later, because someone emailed me and asked. On 101, we gave direction, which is kind of a misnomer, because we don't, we're not the decision maker, we can ask on this, which is a little frustrating sometimes. We asked that they take our direction on how they do the lines for the exit ramp, and I never heard back if they agreed or not, and someone just emailed me asking. And do you know if, does anyone know if they took our suggestion on how to make the painted lines for the exit more effective and efficient? I just never heard back.
Yeah, so, we can follow up with you on that. There has been dialogue with Caltrans in terms of the exact specificity, that's where I'd have to get back to you, but we have had back and forth with Caltrans. We'll be looking to do an info item to the council about the Willow 1 interchange upcoming, so we can provide that feedback then.
Okay, thank you.
Council, sorry, Vice Mayor Taylor? No? Oh, okay. So, I just wanted, the only one I, actually, I'm glad Willow 1, Road 101 interchange was discussed. I, when it comes back for the info item, if there's consensus on council right now, I appreciate the fact that it's dedicated for, I think it should stay on the list, obviously. But the thing that I think I'd like to do is that when it comes back to us for the report out, if it could come to us as an item for consideration of appointment of a council subcommittee to work with staff so that there can be concerns brought to Caltrans, and it can be, we can't, we won't decide that today whether or not that happens, but as we, I think it's worthy of consideration if there's consensus on council, because I think that there are enough issues right now, tracking in terms of taking in public input, that it would be great for them to be able to do that. And then, from a council, I know you're working with them, but report back to council if there needs to be some sort of council communication, that would be great. Is there consensus around that being all right? Great, okay. Any other comment on this list? Council, Vice Mayor Taylor?
So, I have a question around the Chillicothe streetscape, which is number, oh, I'm sorry, it is not up to number 16. Let me look at my other list. Let's see, 11, Parks and Rec. Okay, I have a question about number 11, the Parks and Rec's master plan update, which I know is not completed yet. I'm going to put this out there, because it's already been circulating in my community about doing a site needs study for the Onetta Harris lot. Is it possible to include that into the Parks and Rec's master plan?
So, I believe I have actually read the, one of the comments that was made on that particular topic, a recommendation to look at the site. So, I will, can speak to that. I do know that the consultant we're working with, Gates Associates, is taking a look at the campus. In particular, it is the site with the oldest facilities that we have, community centers that we have here in the city, so we are looking at that campus. We did also have a separate study that was done of that campus, a campus from Knoll and Tam Architects, which Justin probably could speak to, which we also were referring to. So, the consultant also has that information. So, just to focus, we are focusing, there is a lot of focus on the outcome, some of the recommendations that will come out of the master plan will be speaking to the campus there, so. But I did recall, at least in the comments, if I can mention, that the ask was for a committee or a group to focus in on the campus and its needs, and that might perhaps be an outcome through another stage after the master plan, so.
And that would include the senior center as well, and the child development center?
Absolutely, we'd be looking at the whole campus.
And including the parking.
Most definitely.
Thank you, Derek.
All right, so, a last comment on this, because I want to say, and so it's not lost in the hearing, this is a lot of substantive work that you guys are in the middle of. We appreciate it. We appreciate how much work is going into all of these projects and are ongoing. A lot of these completion dates are this year, so these are ongoing projects that are taking place now, and we recognize the staff capacity associated with each one of these projects. So, it's going to be important for us as we go through the rest of our council goal-setting for you guys to go ahead and explain to us, because these projects are ongoing in this, in this part of the work plan, how that affects other things that we may be thinking about. Thank you. Go ahead and move to the next part. Yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Nash.
One last question on the Safe Routes for School. Will we have an opportunity to, this, what we're talking about right now is strictly the, what's a priority, the non-infrastructure, and there will be a chance later to talk about more of the infrastructure?
Well, so, we're talking about these projects now, and whether or not that, so we just went through these projects, one through 16, that are currently in process. And this is really about, I think, I believe this discussion is about giving us a background on where they are in process right now, how much time is being dedicated to that, so we know. As we go through the rest of this list, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, won't be the first time, we're going to go through and talk about projects that are on the list that made, that are, that we identified earlier, and then we can ask questions about whether or not they rise such that we're going to add them to the work plan this year. Internal to that, we can ask questions about things we can, we are concerned about, or we want to be a part of that, but we're not going to necessarily take votes on that. Those are items that will come back to us during our normal council work process on agendas to go ahead and have the policy, both the policy and direction worked out at that time. Is that right, Mr. Pogaros? Yes? Great, all right. So, let's go ahead and move on to the next, next part of the presentation.
Counselor.
Yeah, councilmember Nash.
I just want to make sure that I don't miss an opportunity to advocate for Safe Routes, eight to 80, citywide. Will there be a chance later to advocate for that, or is this the opportunity to do that?
So, Safe Routes as an item, well, now would be the time to say that you want Safe Routes to come back to the city council, so that we can go and talk about the policies underlying Safe Routes, but actually advocating for what Safe Routes means and the policies implemented in that. Today is not the time to do that. So, Safe Routes as a program is something that gets prioritized today, but if we're going to have an underlying council discussion about what that means, that takes place at a council meeting.
All right, just, please stop me if I'm going in the wrong direction, but I just wanted to confirm that I would like to see the Safe Routes program to continue, that the vision is expanded beyond school users to Safe Routes for all users from eight to 80. I'd like to see, under that, develop a citywide road standards to improve safety and calm traffic, prioritizing residents over commuters, and assess a citywide 25 mile per hour speed limit. And I also would agree with the comment to create a full-time position to support pedestrian and bike safety systematically across the city.
Okay, so, those are, my understanding, staff correct me if I'm wrong, but, so, the citywide, so getting into the Safe Routes to School process and what that means from, whether it be from, if we expand it, from school kids will come, can come back to us. The other two things are a creation of, creation of a program and a staff position. That, the creation of a program would come to us in this discussion as a new council item that we could talk about, or, actually, I'm not, but we, there still needs to be, there needs definition around that, so I don't know if it's something that we can put, I've done this before, so I've done this before in a goal-setting meeting, and typically, I think what's said to me in the past is, we'll, why don't we go ahead and put it on a council item to be addressed, so staff can sit down with you and work out the details of it, and then we can go ahead and just determine where that fits into the work plan. So, the fact that it isn't added to the work plan today doesn't mean it's not- So the fact that it isn't added to the work plan today doesn't mean it's not happening. It means that it's been raised as an issue for discussion that we'll go ahead and put some definition around and then see whether or not we can go ahead and fit it in. So, but identifying it now is great because it's something that we all keep in mind as we're doing this. And if other council members and staff think, hey, that's a great idea, we should leave a little bit of buffer in what we're doing to do that, that's great. But today wouldn't be the day to say absolutely to do that because they have to, we need, we need input around it. Is that good? Is that good? Yes.
Yes, with one clarification. If we can just get to, whether it's straw poll, general consensus that you do want staff to look at that because then we can bring that back at a future item. So if we can just do some sort of, making sure it's just not one council member, but the.
So when we get to that part of the discussion today about things that we want council to think about working on in the future, so we'll bring that back at that time because I have a feeling other people have things they may be interested in. All right?
Yes.
So let's move on to the next part of the presentation. And thank you.
So this next grouping of projects, 17 through 28 here. The next grouping of projects here are projects that staff anticipates continuing into 2019, 20. These are, this is work that will begin or is already underway in all of these areas as part of the informational item that was provided to the council on the 29th. Each of these projects has what we call a project on a page, which is a detailed description of both the project's scope as well as the major milestones. Again, I do want to highlight that here we have three of the city council's top priorities from 2018 continuing on. This is not to imply that staff is necessarily advocating that these, all of these move forward. What we are saying, however, is that based on the direction that we've received from city council to date, we are continuing forward with these projects. So we are seeking city council guidance today on whether these projects move forward into 2019. The differentiating factor between these and the list that we just discussed is that we genuinely think that these will continue into the latter part of 2019, conceivably into the earlier part of 2020.
For clarification on process, we're going, we're going, even though we're looking at the list right now, we're going to discuss what would be a priority later on today? Or do you want input on that now? I think for housekeeping, it might be smart to do prioritization at the end.
Absolutely. So I think that one of the questions here would be is if there's something that perhaps we don't, that the current council feels may not be on the higher end of the priority list that might come off as we look at prioritization later this afternoon.
Okay. I, before, and just for housekeeping, just at the outset, so folks know, items, this is, goes through 17 through what?
26.
All right, so 17 through 26. So I met with the city attorney prior on what.
Excuse me, I think we're just piecing together that it's through 28 on the screen because there are two more projects on a page in the packet. And so there is, what's on the screen is the most up-to-date listing.
I wondered about that.
Through 28.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, the county, the 2018 priority list had as a priority housing policies, which was very broad. And so we've replaced that with 27 and 28, which are two specific policies to move forward in 2019.
Okay, so, and I encourage you all, if you have conflicts, to do the same. I met with the city attorney prior to today to see which items I may have conflicts on. And for the ease of, for ease of movement of this meeting, what I'm going to do is if I have a conflict interior to an overall, to an overall project, rather than try to segment that out somehow as the city attorney would do when it came before council, I'm just going to take myself out of consideration for that, for that item. So with that in mind, I am recused on items 18 and 19 at this time because I now am employed at 855 Oak Grove Avenue in Menlo Park. So if anyone has any other conflicts, it would be great to state them now, and if not, we can go and move, move forward in the general discussion. Nope? Okay, so let's go ahead at this time and bring up if there's any public comment on any of these items, 17 through 28. Yeah, Ms. Bruzy?
Hi, Katie Bruzy, commenting again on behalf of the Complete Streets Commission. Actually, there are a couple of things on this list that we had strong feelings about. Our top three priorities were actually to do with the middle crossing and any associated bike routes that could be created, but we felt the middle crossing was a really important step that the city needs to take. The safe routes to school program, as I mentioned. And then finally, we had, we've seen this downtown parking structure and we've heard a lot from people about how important it is to them. But we would respectfully like to ask the council to expand its focus when they're looking at downtown parking structure to downtown access. Parking is a part of access, but so are biking and walking. And what we're concerned about is that a parking structure which should cost the city up to like $60 million, that's what the Cal Ave parking structure is costing right now, is being undertaken prematurely. That we'd like to see the city be a little bit more thoughtful about how we're using our existing parking right now, possibly charging for parking. And I'll let my colleague, Edina Levin, go into a little more detail there. But we strongly, there's a connection between some of these other programs that you have listed here, like the Transportation Management Association, that we want to look at. There's a, there's a connection with the downtown specific plan update because I know there's a, right now, a parking structure is in the downtown specific plan. So I think there's some interconnectedness here, but we felt access was the important thing, helping people get to our town and get through our town safely. When you think about downtowns that people like to visit around our country, most of them aren't super parking centric, right? They're not, you know, you look at like the Pearl Street Mall in Boulder, or you think about like the downtown Burlington, Vermont. And if we want a downtown where people want to like hang out safely, including, you know, the hundreds of kids that pour into our downtown every weekday afternoon, I think we need to think beyond a parking structure. Thank you.
Ms. Levin?
Edina Levin, also representing the Complete Streets Commission and building on what Katie had just said in terms of encouraging the council to look at the downtown access, not only in the form of a parking garage. Access means access in multiple modes and for multiple audiences, for people who are visiting downtown as residents of Menlo Park nearby, people who are visiting from further away, as well as people who work downtown. And so that includes helping people who are nearby to potentially walk and bicycle. It's about helping people who work downtown, who have the ability and it's a good fit for them to take public transit or carpool. And so, you know, thinking about those different audiences and also thinking about people at different income levels. I think one thing for us to look at, and this overlaps with the TMA, is the experience in Palo Alto where they created a Transportation Management Association, starting to focus on their downtown. And they have over 300 low-income workers who are now using transit and carpooling and because of this program that their employers were, did not have the ability to provide these benefits. The TMA can now do that. 300 people, that's the size of a parking garage, and it's cheaper to do that, to offer those services than to build a parking garage on an annualized basis. Also, to think about in terms of new residents and new uses and how much parking we need for them and how to share those needs and manage the needs. Across downtown, there's a lot that we can learn from the state of the art in terms of using our parking efficiently, including for new uses. So thank you for considering reframing that issue as access, not just parking.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I want to echo Edina and Katie, so I'm not going to repeat what they said about downtown access. But I wanted to speak about the TMP and I am a member of the TMP OOC. But I'm speaking as an individual and I just wanted to say a few things. One is, we need to prioritize at least the TIF part of it because I know that that's money we need to get for development. And then with the rest of the TMP, I'm not sure what the future holds for the TMP, but the pieces that I think are most important sooner than later are a, some citywide standards so we can make our streets safer as soon as possible. And the bike and ped, basically like a traffic calming and making our streets more human. So whatever happens to the TMP, I hope we look at it for residents and for safety and, so that we can implement and have a real roadmap of how we're going to actually do things as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. It's not on the list yet. I appreciate it. So, yeah, so I want to go ahead and encourage folks to come up. But again, we're commenting, just so folks know, we're commenting right now, the focus of the presentation right now is whether something would remain on the list or come off the list. List 17 through 28, and if we, if we could scroll down again so people could take another look. So it would be great if folks, if we could just sort of line up so I could see Mr. Marshall.
Hello, Mayor Mueller, and welcome new council members. My name's Scott Marshall and I am a environmental quality commissioner and currently the chair, speaking as a resident today. I want to.
Mic closer.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we are working on getting a review of the Heritage Tree Ordinance. That will come to you at some point in the upcoming few months, maybe, maybe longer, but please keep that on the plan. Of course, that's very important to me and I think many residents in Menlo Park. Also, just a comment, I didn't want to throw, I wanted to throw this into the Willow Road interchanges. Shouldn't the Willow Street study be done at the same time in concert with that interchange at 101? And lastly, for the downtown parking structure, we live in a community that's very quaint. It's a small little town in a large urban area, and there are many buildings that are around us, maybe not in our city, but like in Redwood City or other places, that have really changed the character of that town. I think Menlo Park is a beautiful little town. I like it for what it is. Sometimes a building may look good on paper, but when you think of where it's going to be in the site, it may not be the best idea. I'm not against the parking structure, but I think it would have to be something that would be for good use, for the, for good use for the whole community. Like maybe there would be some public space on it or something. But let's look at all the alternatives because a parking structure downtown could change the character of downtown, and we don't want to make our town too big. We want to keep it small, like a village. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Ms. Grove?
Hi, I'm Karen Grove. I'm a member of the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking as myself. I'm also part of a group called Menlo Together that submitted a letter outlining interconnected priorities related to housing, transportation, sustainability, and equity. And I want to support that letter. I also want to add my personal comment, which is just a reminder that 42% of our residents are renters and that in a general thing, since this is priorities, I think we should give them more priority than we have in the past. And just to comment, our renters have been and are being actively displaced, and it's a huge loss. So I think anti-displacement measures such as protection, tenant rights, preservation, and production of housing at all levels of affordability with a special emphasis on housing near transit should be priorities. And so to that end, I'd like to see us prioritize the continued conversation about tenant relocation assistance. The downtown specific update is a huge opportunity to address these issues. And items 27 and 28, which are both preservation strategies, should be high priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Good morning and thank you for this process. I'd first like to say, we need to finish what we've begun. I've made comments on most of these items in writing. And simply put, incorporating the ideas and concepts that are being brought before you under each of these items and moving forward on them. And there may be, may be some nuances that are, are key. But for the most part, the concept is going to be what happens. If we begin to stop working on projects we've already begun, it's been a waste of time and we can't even measure the amount of, of human time that's being wasted with that in addition to the money. So please consider moving forward with the comments that are coming forward. Thank you.
Good morning. Diane Bailey with Menlo Spark, working towards a carbon-free future for Menlo Park and Silicon Valley. I wanted to urge you to retain the downtown plan update in the 2019 work plan. I think it's a really important opportunity to take the excellent green building standards from Connect Menlo in, in the M2 or Bayfront area and apply them downtown. It's really important that the city consider every new development and avoiding fossil fuel use for each new development. And the downtown plan update is a nice way to codify that and make it very clear to developers and builders that this is the new expectation, that we not add new carbon emissions through the built environment, that, but that some developments will be welcome as long as they don't increase the carbon budget. And this is really no-cost item to the city. There is a consulting firm called Redwood Energy that is offering free technical assistance both to developers and builders as well as city staff to help update the standards from Connect Menlo, as is Peninsula Clean Energy, and I'll talk about that a little more later. But I also wanted to note that the technology has really progressed to build all-electric and zero-carbons, so much so that it saves developers money to do that now. It's the right thing to do, and a lot of developers might not know this. And so I think it's important for the city to take a stance and update these standards. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Ms. Frye?
Patty Frye. I want to comment on two things. One is number 21, Middle Avenue Caltrans Crossing Study. I think we really need to make sure that we've ensured that there's safe approaches to such a tunnel or crossing. And that isn't currently being looked at, and I, maybe this isn't the right place to do it, but, and if we don't look at, you know, realistically, how Middle Avenue is a path, it's not safe. And do we need to look at Partridge, Roglee, Live Oak as approaches that are safer? That's not currently part of it. Now, number 19 about the specific plan, downtown specific plan, if I understand what I read, it's implementing some changes that were authorized or approved by a council in 2015 and 2017 for their biennial reviews. Now we're at a time for another biennial review. It's 2019. So I would encourage you to do that review. It's a wonderful opportunity to relook at how the development is going versus what was expected, what was balanced and, and isn't, and ensure that what the priorities now are to improve the jobs housing balance, to have things be much more sustainable, that we're looking at that. And my personal opinion is that the zoning rules that were there, that were set in, you know, in the bottom of the recession, don't work in this kind of economy. So I'd encourage that, that there be a look at what this means before you go ahead and authorize it because a lot of the elements of it were authorized with potentially very different priorities in 2015 and 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. Ms. Bramlett?
I want to echo Pam Jones's comment that I think we should finish what we start. And then some of the other comments that pertain to identifying, gee, we have an awful lot of interconnected projects where that, that connection could be strengthened. And I would say even more broadly, we need a shared vision in our town. We need alignment to top priorities. You all know I, I think we need a community-led strategic planning process. I think that would help us in many ways. In terms of these projects here, there's no mention of the budget cost per project and how it relates to the overall city budget and timeline. So it's really hard to think strategically without enough information. And the numbers, to me, I mean, you know, that's key to having here. And then some of these represent a mix of minor, like the Heritage Tree Ordinance. Well, I consider that minor, all things considered. And then some very major that you know there are going to be huge downstream complications if, if, you know, it's agreed to, like a transportation master plan. So, project on a page. So project on a page, those admit financial details, the narrative, you know, I've read through most of them, not all of them. It's uneven in terms of really seeing what's going on, and the justification may not be fully, I don't consider them all fully objective. I think they're alternative, there are other facts that could be brought in. So I just think it's time to look at our overall process here in our town, how we go about this.
Thank you. Ms. Dean?
Good morning. Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. I did send in comments ahead of time, and two of those comments are priorities for us at the Chamber of Commerce, are items that are on this list, they're continuing as priorities from last year. The first one, you've stated as a downtown parking structure, and we've requested over time that we not talk about a downtown parking structure, but rather a downtown parking solution. One of the specific goal, one of the specific plan goals is to develop parking strategies and facilities that meet the commercial and residential needs of the community. We need a parking solution. Downtown vibrancy is an empty phrase without a parking solution. Our request is to begin a near-term parking program to preserve and enhance existing downtown parking. Renovate plazas 1, 7, and 8 immediately. These plazas are currently in disrepair. They have inadequate lighting, and they are not what Menlo Park wants to show, either our residents or our visitors. Install a long-term pay option in all plazas with state-of-the-art technology, and then create a plan for a parking structure. The latter should also be addressed in the downtown specific plan, in particular if it's envisioned as a mixed-use project, which is an idea that many people have had, and I think Mayor Mueller is among those. And then our second comment on the existing list is update the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan. There are known deficiencies and desired changes that should be addressed now, and they should be addressed by a review of the plan, not the necessity to address them with amendments as we had to with the Guild project in order to make that go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Horst?
Hi there. I'm Rachel Horst. I am a member of the Housing Commission, but I'm speaking for myself. I am also a member of Menlo Together, so I will also plug the letter that we sent to you with a list of detailed priorities, which I will not get into at this time. But my basic message in this context, thinking about existing priorities, is how interconnected these issues are. The issues that Menlo Together, as was already mentioned, stands for, like sustainability and housing, equity, and transportation, these issues can't be dealt with in a vacuum. So I just ask that we approach these priorities and future priorities with that in mind. So speaking specifically to 19, the downtown specific plan update, we have an opportunity there, as Karen has said, on the housing front, thinking about housing accessibility and affordability, but also thinking about on the climate front, as Diane has said. We also have an opportunity in the context of the housing discussion to more equitably distribute housing in the city. That means building also in downtown and not just in one part of the city. On 18, the parking structure, so many people have said very eloquent words about that, like Katie and Adina, and I wholeheartedly agree with those. I view it as an opportunity only if we look at this structure from the standpoint of these interconnected issues, not just an issue of parking. And then 17, finally, with the transportation master plan, as Jen has mentioned, and so many have said, let's keep safety as our priority, but also I ask myself, look, how can we reduce solo driving in the city? That's a statewide goal. That's a climate goal. So again, I just ask to keep this interconnectedness in mind, and we can hold on to these existing priorities, but perhaps we can change the lens through which we're viewing them, and that will change the policies that result. Thanks.
I didn't fill out a card.
Mr. Golden, go ahead.
I'm Evan Golden. I'm going to soon be a member of the Transportation or the Complete Streets Commission. I'm also a downtown resident. I just wanted to speak in that regard. I'm very excited about the list of priorities. They really dovetail with a lot of the changes I would like to see in Menlo Park, but I wanted to suggest a couple tweaks. One, I am a downtown resident, and I would urge us to not frame our priority in terms of building a parking garage. I would like us to consider all possible solutions and really focus on improving access to downtown, right? That building a parking garage is a possible solution. The problem we really need to tackle is how to better improve access to downtown. So I'd like us to frame that priority in a different way. I'd also, I'd like to echo the other speakers that I'd really like to see my neighborhood downtown be a more vibrant place. So I'd like to see a comprehensive solution to that that involves transportation. I think that also involves housing. I think that also involves changes to kind of how we treat the commercial district downtown. And I will end it there. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Freese?
Greg Ferris, Menlo Park resident, 31 years. Cyclist, I bike from west Menlo Park to SRI, right over here. I go down Menlo Avenue. And I'd like to encourage, as part of a parking solution, to consider making the Menlo Avenue part of the bike route safer bicycles by considering eliminating one side of parking like was done on Oak Grove, and that's excellent, it's on the other side of town, but it's rather frightening biking on Menlo Avenue. It's marked for bikes. It's a shared lane. It goes from a shared lane to a bike, dedicated bike lane as you cross El Camino, then it merges and it becomes another shared lane during the merge, and then it goes to a dedicated lane. And when I'm on Menlo Avenue, it's very frequent that cars will tailgate me because they don't like me being in the lane, which is in the middle, okay? They don't want me being in the middle, they want me in the bike zone, and they're so close that if I fall, they cannot avoid running over me because they're that close. I mean, if I was a car, it'd be a fender bender, no big deal. Anyway, I'd like you to consider, you know, maybe removing the lane of cars for bike safety. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're going to end closed public comment on items 17 through 28. For housekeeping, I think what I'm going to do is, because I am certain there's going to be discussion on items 18 and 19, so I'm going to go ahead at this point and allow that discussion to take place and turn the meeting over to Vice Mayor Taylor. When discussion has, when you guys are sure you're done with your discussion on that, go ahead and invite me back in the room. I'll come back in the room. I am going to, but I do want to remind everyone now, just generally, what we're doing at this portion, I should have said that before, I just thought I said, is we're trying to decide whether or not items are staying on the list of priorities or coming off the list of priorities. We're still not yet having the discussion of are we adding new things to the list. We're going to have that at the end.
But just for clarification, we could also be tweaking the priorities, right? Or are we saying we have to accept full freight, what's there or not?
You can definitely tweak. We are not telling you to accept-
Only tweak, right?
We're just looking for the feedback. Are these still important to you? Or do you want to recharacterize them?
So just, and I'm not trying to talk about any item before I leave, but my one thing I would say is though, if that we're going to get into a discussion about really a deep, a deep change to something, then I think that that is, when it becomes something new, if it becomes something new in character, then I think we would have a discussion about that later on of whether or not it's becoming, it's going on to the list. And then also remember too, if, in terms of framing around something, that comes back to us as an agenda item for consideration and staff direction, because we're not going to ask staff today to get into a real big, deep discussion substantively about each item. So like, if we're going to tweak, just generally, if we're going to tweak anything today, we're going to say to them, okay, we want this still on the list, but we want it tweaked, and then we're going to come back to council at a later time and have a policy discussion about what that means. Okay?
So just to be clear, right now, while you're stepping out, the discussion is only on items 18 and 19?
Right.
And at the conclusion of the discussion of those two items, then you-
I'm coming back in.
I am also stepping out for item 19 because the office that we lease is also in the specific plan area.
And to be clear, what my conflict is, I work at 855 Oak Grove. For ease of this discussion, I'm leaving generally, if the item were to come back as a council item, same as for the city attorney, there'd be work to segment out our conflict from that discussion so we could participate in portions of it, but for ease of this meeting today, since we're not doing anything substantively, we'll be stepping out for conflict reasons.
And I have two things. One is, I'm going to take a two-minute break, bio break, and the second is, there was something scheduled in here at 11 o'clock, and I just wanted to find out, because people are coming in for it, has it been rescheduled or relocated?
It has been relocated to the library.
Okay, everyone, I'm going to give you a minute to get back into your seats. Okay, I'm going to bring the meeting back into order, so if everyone can take their Okay, we are going to start where we left off. So if those of you who are talking, if you could take your conversation outside, that would be great. We are on items 18 and 19, and it is, we are done with public comment, and we're bringing it back to the council. So if anyone wants to start off, I'll start on the far end with Councilmember Combs.
I'll pass at the moment and let others chat or talk.
Councilmember Nash?
Okay, so I believe that we should keep these two items in, but both of them should be, come back to council with a new vision of what they are. So on the parking structure, as was said by many people, I believe that what we should be looking for is a parking solution, and beyond that, I think we should be looking for something immediate for short-term mitigations for downtown parking. Without going into it too much, just over the course of the last few months, I've spoken with many, many people, businesses, residents, council, realtors, and it really seems like what the real issue is, is that the folks who are working downtown don't have parking, they're taking a lot of the spaces, and then they're running around every three hours to move their cars. That's creating traffic and filling up spaces. And I think that if we were to find a parking solution for the downtown workers, including access to how the shuttles, anyway, something, that would be worthwhile. I have some other thoughts which I can bring when we go to council. And also, we really need to understand the utilization needs quantitatively now and in the future, especially as new developments come online. There's, I hear quite a bit of talk of potential excess capacity at Greenheart, for example, and just how that works. And then beyond that, just, we need to, before we embark on parking structures, we really need to take a good look at the downtown plan and the specific plan, what is downtown? Right now, I think we need to do probably more than an update. We really need a new vision for new realities. We've got all sorts of housing mandates that are coming at us, and I think we need to be proactive about that. We've got CASA, all sorts of, or some other type of housing mandate where we will need to make, to put housing downtown and around transit. We should be planning for that, doing that proactively, and looking at the impacts of those anticipated housing mandates. We need to update the zoning as appropriate, and while we're doing that, we need to retain and attract- And so I think that for me, you know, my support would be in removing the downtown parking structure, because I don't think that that's the solution that we should go in at this moment, and there are a lot of other things to explore. But I don't think we can explore them in the shadow of that being on a work plan. I think we have to remove it and say that we don't see that as a priority for the city at this moment. And so, you know, those would be my comments with regard to those two items.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. With regard to the downtown specific plan, before I start, one thing that really frustrated me when I first started on council is how long it takes to do the obvious. My great-grandmother used to say, "Snails whizzing by make us dizzy." And you think, why does it take us years to put in a sidewalk? Why does it take us so long? And it's because we do try to have as robust a conversation as possible with residents, with different things. It takes time to make thoughtful decisions and informed decisions. So if we want something done in five years, we have to start it now. If we delay it, it will be five to 10 years from whenever we start the conversation. So when we talk about doing something immediate, good luck with that. There's nothing immediate around here. Everything is going to take a lot of time. And the downtown specific plan, as an example, took six years and millions of dollars to do all the research and have all the meetings. I forget how many, it was some insane amount of different community meetings over a six-year period, which is useful, which is really good for capturing what people are thinking and what their priorities are. And those priorities, as we go back and review this, are for housing downtown. That came out as one of the priorities. And one of the priorities was housing near transit, which came out as one of the priorities. So I think a lot of the priorities are there, they just haven't bubbled up to the action level. So absolutely, I think we, not only should we, we must go back and review this, because that's part of our mandate. That's what if we agreed to do, well, I didn't, we, I wasn't even on council when that was put together. That was right before me. But it's good to review that periodically and make sure that we're on track with what came out of that process, because it was a really deep process that went through. And in terms of downtown, I've spent a lot of time talking with the business owners, with the people that shop downtown, with the people across the board. And absolutely, part of the parking problem is the solution for the people that work downtown. Not all of them have the option of taking public transport or riding a bike. They have to take their cars and move them around, and quite often, they're parking even right in front of their shop. And the next problem, and if you guys ever want to do some interesting research, go hang out one morning at the Needlepoint shop and speak to some of the elderly ladies there that come at Needlepoint, who have very strong opinions as well, on the fact that people with young children and the elderly, again, it's harder for them to ride their bike and they drive their cars, and then they have to park blocks away and walk to where they're going, which is harder for certain parts of our population. And if we have a solution for the people who are working downtown, which is how we came up with the garage, if we have a solution where the people working can all park their car in the garage, it sits there all day, it frees up the space for the people with young children, the elderly, the people who have mobility issues, it really kills, as they say, you know, you hit three birds with one stone on this, which is why it has bubbled up as such a priority. And then you say, well, parking structure's going to last, what, 50, 60 years? Where in 30, 40 years, we might all have cars such that we don't need the parking structure. Well, there are ways of building the parking structure so that it can very easily be, evolve into housing later. You make it, there are structural ways of doing it, so that it can turn into housing decades from now if we don't need it anymore. But right now, flat-out, we need a solution, and I completely agree with Fran Dean, that we need a short-term solution to deal with some of the issues, to make it easier, smoother, and more inviting for people to come into our downtown in the short term and in the long term. And I kid you not, if we start it now, we'd be lucky to have it in five years, because it does take that long. But we need to start the discussion on if we're going to have a vibrant downtown, which is one of the reasons that inspired me to run in the first place. If vibrant downtown means we have people downtown. Now, when we build a parking structure, absolutely, a big part of that also needs to be covered, secure places for people to put their bicycles, so they're not just locked up outside, so that if people ride their bike to work and it's raining or whatever, they know they're safe and they're taken care of. But we need a structure to make sure, or at least start along those lines now, to look at how we can have something that maybe is parking/housing now or later, but is a solution for people working downtown, is a solution for people coming downtown, to make it a more enjoyable, inviting place for them to be. Let me just look at my notes, see if I've forgotten anything. Anyway, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And that's coming from really spending a lot of time, not only talking to people in the needs, but also doing research into smart cities and how smart cities are creating new parking structures that are able to evolve through the decades as the needs of the city evolve.
Thank you. Yes, now it's on me. Well, this part of it is pretty challenging, because going back a few years, just thinking about when this, when the downtown specific plan came up, and then looking at comprehensive solutions around parking, comprehensive solutions around what the downtown looks like, I know that there are business owners that do want a parking structure. I know that there are community members who do not want a parking structure. The fact is, it is going to take a long time to build. I do not believe that we need to remove it off the list. I do believe that we need to look at some simpler solutions that we can deal with today, because it is an issue. I tend not to drive downtown because of the parking. And if I had, well, although it was safe, I would consider walking downtown. But at any rate, I want to keep both those items on as a priority. We definitely need to update our specific plan to include the housing overlay. And that's the only comments that I have. I don't know if staff was going to follow up, or if we were going to move on to the next items and bring our mayor back in.
I think just bring the mayor back in. Nope, nope, my staff disagrees. Nope. Okay, now they agree.
Well, I actually would agree with what Drew said, where we, it would be fine with me to remove the parking structure, as long as we bring back another item, to deal with the immediate parking.
May I? Yeah, if I may. The question, so out of this process, what we're hoping to do today is understand which of these you want to move forward to 2019, clearly. If the consensus of this, of the council is for us to rethink or redefine the downtown parking matter, then we will take that feedback and make that adjustment and bring it back for consideration. But if you want to take it off and remove it now, I can just mark it as red, and we'll carry that into the afternoon.
Well, I think the issue is, is that, and please, someone correct me if I'm wrong, I think you have two votes for removing it, and I think you have two votes for continuing it in its sort of form. I mean, I don't want to put lipstick on this pig, right? So for me, that's my perspective. And so that's where we are. So you can sort of go away and rethink it, but that's not in line with what I'm asking, just so we're clear.
I think you have a pretty clear divided line there. I think, so I'll just feed back to you that it's a two-to-two straw man vote or straw person vote. And so we will take that into consideration when we bring back the material to you.
I have a question. At some point, I believe there was discussion at the last council meeting, that there wouldn't be, that if we needed to have a second meeting regarding goals, that we could, we can do that? Is that still on the table, or is it depends on what happens in the next three and a half hours?
A little bit of both. It does depend on what happens in the next, by what we accomplished today. And we all is intended to bring back a draft final plan to the council. And if the council needs more discussion before they're prepared to authorize a draft final, then we will indeed arrange another time to do that.
Okay. Because, just to make it clear, the parking structure is on here because we need parking. But if there's a comprehensive plan around figuring out parking between then, then that would, that can substitute it as Councilmember Nash and Combs' support. And so I just want to make sure, yes or no?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that if, that once the draft comes out, there's still the option to say, no, we don't want it on there.
Yes. This is, the intention is for this, whatever final document we prepare, that it reflects the council's true priorities. And so if we have to change it 20 times to do that, we will do so.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I just had a, please go, Mark. No, you're good.
Thank you. Mark Monza, Community Development Director. Just for clarification, really quick, because I noticed this is on the project on the page. So the specific plan, as it's adopted right now, allows for a downtown parking structure. It does not allow for any other uses than that, and I know there's probably going to be more conversation as to the appropriateness of that. So I just wanted to provide clarification that when we're talking about amending the specific plan, that there's two components of it. One of them could be the parking structure, if it contained, if you chose to move forward with it, and if it contained other uses other than parking. And then there would be amendments that potentially to other parts of the plan. So to address the housing issue, to address density, to address a variety of the development caps for both residential and commercial. So I just wanted to provide that clarification as you move forward with your conversation.
Can we say that one more time?
Wow. Took everything I had the first time. So the specific plan is referenced twice, is potentially to be amended, potentially as a work plan item or as a priority for 2019. One way would be to amend it to allow for a parking structure that allows for other uses. The specific plan, as it's written right now, allows for a parking structure on certain plazas. It does not allow for, likely, for any other uses other than parking. So that would involve a separate process. It could involve an environmental process to the specific plan, if we were, if you were to proceed with the parking structure with some other types of uses. So that's kind of Amendment A, if you will. Amendment B is the balance of the specific plan, and your conversations about potentially amending it to encourage greater housing near transit or higher densities, to address the development cap issues. I believe there was a reference, the commercial, non-residential cap in the specific plan is very close to its cap. We are not close on the residential side. We are close on the commercial side. So if there was an interest of the city council and the community to amend those commercial caps, that would be a separate process. So I just want to make sure, as a matter of clarity, as we're moving forward, that there's potentially a plan to amend the specific plan itself. And then there's a component of that, if you were to choose to move forward with the parking structure with other uses, that would involve likely a separate amendment, and then, of course, a capacity issue. I hope I didn't confuse it, Councilmember Nash.
And I would just, so when it comes to, sorry, you can, so when it comes to priorities, right, and how the staff is seeing them, if there is a priority that's 5-0, and if there's a priority that's 2-2, does that factor into how you're seeing that priority? Does the actual sort of, like, the vote count on the dais matter?
So if we use the process that we used last year, what will happen is, the council will identify a number of top priorities. You'll see that the downtown parking structure is listed as a top priority for 2018. And then there's sort of the iterative process of the council negotiating amongst its various priority issues to arrive at a top list, whether it be five, whether it be six. And it's our understanding as staff that the council's vote on those top priorities reflects the will of the council, and we will move forward as, with the appropriate level of effort to ensure that those projects, as they're defined, move forward in the timeframe. So there, another way of saying this is, if there's a 2-2 for a downtown parking structure or downtown parking solution, when we get to the final prioritization, the council may have, may be able to reach consensus on a top priority list that either does or does not include the downtown parking structure, and that's ultimately what we're looking for. And that does not mean that we won't work on the downtown parking structure, it just means that it will not be the highest priority for 2019, if that's the council's direction.
I just got tripped up where you said it doesn't mean we wouldn't work on the parking structure.
Yeah, so a great example is, well, whatever the project is, so if the parking structure does make it onto the work plan, a good example would be the, in 2018, we, the work plan includes number 21, which is the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing Study. That project is anticipated to have work done in this year, but it wasn't identified by the council at the time as the highest priority. So we would prioritize resources for the specific plan ahead of the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing.
So this is if the council does not vote against the project, then it would stay on? Okay.
Is there any way to put the downtown parking structure with the update for the specific plan?
You would be able to, yes, the short answer would be yes. The second part of that answer-
So I just want to make sure as a matter of clarity as we're moving forward, that there's potentially a plan to amend the specific plan itself. And then there's a component of that, if you were to choose to move forward with the parking structure with other uses, that would involve likely a separate amendment and then of course, a capacity issue. I hope I didn't confuse it, Councilmember Nash.
And I would just, so when it comes to, sorry. So when it comes to priorities, right? And, and how the staff has seen them, if there is a priority that's 5-0 and if there's a priority that's 2-2, does that factor into how you're seeing that, that priority? Does the actual sort of like the vote count on the dais matter?
So if we use the process that we used last year, what will happen is the council will identify a number of top priorities. You'll see that the downtown parking structure is listed as a top priority for 2018. And then there's sort of the iterative process of the council negotiating amongst its various priority issues to arrive at a top list, whether it be five, whether it be six. And it's our understanding as staff that the council's vote on those top priorities reflects the will of the council and we will move forward as, with the appropriate level of effort to ensure that those projects as they're defined move forward in the timeframe. So there, on the, another way of saying this is if there's a 2-2 for a downtown parking structure or downtown parking solution, when we get to the final prioritization, the council may have, may be able to reach consensus on a top priority list that either does or does not include the downtown parking structure and that's ultimately what we're looking for. And that does not mean that we won't work on the downtown parking structure. It just means that it will not be the highest priority for 2019, if that's the council's direction.
I just got tripped up where you said it doesn't mean we wouldn't work on the parking structure.
Yeah, so a great example is, well, whatever the project is. So if the, if the parking structure does make it onto the work plan, a good example would be the, in 2018, we, the work plan includes number 21, which is the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing Study. That project is anticipated to have work done in this year, but it wasn't identified by the council at the time as the highest priority. So we would prioritize resources for the specific plan ahead of the Middle, the Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing.
So this is if the council does not vote against the project, then it would make, then it would stay on? Okay.
Is there any way to put the, the downtown parking structure with the update for the specific plan?
You would be able to, yes, the short answer would be yes. The, the second part of that answer would be the capacity to be able to handle amendments to the specific plan, i.e. increased housing, along with amendments potentially for a mixed-use parking structure.
Thank you.
I just want to be clear on the housing. What I'm reacting to is the state mandates that may be coming down.
Understood. So these two projects will advance to the next stage. Is that correct?
Yes.
It's odd walking back in a room and not knowing what was going on. All right. So now we're going to talk about items, all the items on the list but 18 and 19. Now, do we have any, and so, and just real, this is directed to council. Are there any items out of those on the list, 18 or 19, that you want to talk about whether, whether you want to keep it on the list or not? Whether, it's whether, yeah, you can ask questions about it and determining it and determining whether you want to keep it on the list. So if you have questions about it, great, and then we'll see if there's anything that anyone wants to take off the list. So Vice Mayor Taylor.
I have questions about the Chilco streetscape. So I wanted to find out about the project. It's the Chilco that exists past the fire station? Is it Chilco from Ivy Drive to Constitution?
What's listed here is the portion from Bayfront Expressway to just about Terminal, almost to Hamilton. But the primary location is between Bayfront Expressway and the railroad tracks.
And will that include both sides of the street or just one?
For the most part, one side of the street is completed. I think there may be some modifications that happened there. There's another side of the street that hasn't been touched and so that's the main focus. So I think ultimately, the final product would be improvements on both sides, both sides of the street. But there's some work that's already been constructed recently that would remain unchanged.
So on the side that hasn't been touched, will there be a protected lane for bicyclists and pedestrians like the other side?
The final details are being, are in the, in the works. In terms of, I'm looking to Nikki in terms, yes, that, that level of, that component is going to be included.
And then my last question is, is this covered with the, the Facebook Development Agreement? Or is this, the funds coming from someplace else?
Yes, this is negotiated as part of the Facebook Campus Expansion Project Development Agreement. And so the funding's coming from Facebook with staff review and coordination.
Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions regarding any of the projects? Councilmember Nash?
I'm just wondering, is this the time when, for example, the Bellhaven Library has not been listed as a top priority that we would comment on that? Thank you.
No, we're going to do that at the end. Any other questions about any of the comment, any of the items? Okay, anyone want to take any items just off the work plan? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next section.
Yep. So our next group of projects will be our capital improvement plan, which as was mentioned in the information item that was sent to council on the 29th, we would provide a supplementary information item which was printed out and provided to you today, as well as there are some copies in the back for the public that discuss our comprehensive capital improvement plan, which incorporates. This one? Okay. It's this memo that was submitted yesterday and is available. I'm going, the purpose here is to communicate through to the council that as part of the adopted work, as part of the adopted budget, we've moved, we move capital projects from the work plan to the adopted budget. The adopt, the capital improvement program is a five-year plan, so there may be some priorities that either are going to take action in the, in 20, in the, in the budget year or potentially in the future. So what we're going to do is, Justin Murphy will walk through sort of the, how staff has prioritized projects. This reflects how we're internally prioritizing. We want to make sure that we're in sync with the city council on this, on these priorities. And then when it returns to council, what we're really looking for is understanding from you if there are any capital projects that are not ranked tier one, that you, that should be ranked tier one, and then we can return to you and discuss any consequences of sort of reprioritizing the projects. So I hope that that's clear and I'm going to transfer it over or pass it on to Justin Murphy, Public Works Director.
So thank you, Nick. So just for the benefit of the public, they have it up on the screen, but not hard copies, is that right? They're hard copies distributed, great. So then just a bridge between what was distributed previously and what was distributed today. So within the packet, there was a listing of all the capital improvement projects that were contained within the work plan and the heading was 2018 Work Plan Transferred to Capital Improvement Budget. So there are a number of projects that were on the work plan that are also in the CIP. Then there are other projects that were in the CIP budget. So what we attempted to do this year was to just go ahead and refer to the adopted CIP budget. And I'll just kind of scroll ahead so you can kind of see what that looks like. So it's pages like this that are within the work plan. In the bottom right, you'll see like a page number. So this is page 113. This is City Buildings and Systems. Yes, so just to confirm, what I'm, what's on the screen was handed out today, but it's been in the budget document for eight months or so. Okay, so this, so then, these are the pages excerpted from the budget. And then I'm going to talk about this summary table. So this summary table identifies the various categories that we have. And so I'll just go ahead and, and state those for people. So there's the City Buildings and Systems, then Environment, Parks and Recreation, Stormwater, Streets and Sidewalks, Traffic and Transportation, Water. So those categories have existed in our capital improvement budget for a number of years and those categories helped to reflect eligible funding sources for those activities and also how we then have, are staffed with certain skill sets and expertise. So the exercise that we went through was to identify relative priorities. So we're working from an operating assumption that anything that has currently been funded, either past years, and we can date back to at least 2003 for some of these things, to last year, anything that's been funded, we took a stab at identifying tier 1, 2, 3. So in previous work plans, you may recall that there was a categorization of extremely important, very important, and important because everything was important. Okay, so we didn't want to use terminology of high, medium, low. We went with the tier 1, 2, 3. There's a few different components that factor into that and that's kind of listed in the memo and I'll just kind of scroll up so that people can kind of see those about, it's that bulleted list there. You know, if there's something with, that is a, where there's regulatory compliance, that's pretty high priority for us. So one example of that, which we'll talk to, is the Green Infrastructure Plan for Stormwater. There's a number of things, various angles related to, to safety, public safety, work that would actually preserve a city asset as opposed to allowing it to deteriorate and then the cost of full-fledged replacement becomes higher. There are a number of opportunities for improved efficiency. Some of those come from the, even from information technology. Some of those are also how we deal with harder infrastructure. There are a number of projects here that have grant funding timelines, so that kind of factors into the tiering. And then there's a general principle as well in terms of first in, first out, how, when that project first came and was funded and kind of using that for the tiering as well. So those are basic definitions that went into the tiering. We then tried to come up with a general spectrum so that we didn't, taking the traffic and transportation where there's 16 projects, we didn't want to have 16 of those projects in tier one, even though transportation's a very, very important topic for a number of people. So we tried to come up with a distribution spectrum of the categorization. So we then went topic by topic and added this, this column priority. So it's just to the right of the title and it's before the, the fund, listing of the funds. And so we just went through and as purposes for discussion today, to try to, for sake of clarity, reflect to the council and the community, as, taking today as a snapshot, this is how we are prioritizing these projects based off available staffing, based off overall needs and those other criteria that I identified. So this would be opportunity to check in. So I think there's a couple of components to this. One is if there's any project that's currently funded, that the, similar to what we've worked through on some of the work plan items, that the council thinks should be completely defunded, stopped, we would want to hear about that today so we can kind of talk through what the implications of that are and, and get that out there. And then as, as Nick said, any, anything that is currently not, we may want you to focus in on the tier ones, that if you agree, disagree with the tier one assignment, that would definitely be beneficial and even feedback on tier two and tier three. So, so just to kind of check in, I can see whether you want me to kind of go through subject by subject, whether you want to do a little check in and just say, are there any questions about the tiering? So if you want to, let me know how you'd like to proceed.
So I think for efficiency, what I'd like to do is, we can go ahead and take, actually, I think what would be good is actually if there's any questions about which one of these might be, we ask those now because I think that will help inform the public as well. But I'd like to, we limit the question at right now from council about what is a project as opposed to comment on it. Then what we'll do is we'll go ahead and take public comment. And then I'm going to come back to you and ask you if you have any recommendations from altering how it looks right now. And then we'll take discussion from council. So any, are there any questions from council about what a project is? Council, Councilmember Nash?
Could you explain to me, what is the Aquatic Center Maintenance Annual Budget?
Yes, so, and happy to point to the actual descriptions, but I'll just go from, from my head. So this, as many people know, the, the pool was completely rebuilt, I want to say the 2006 timeframe. So brand-new facility, but we've come to the realization a few years ago that we need to kind of reinvest in it to kind of preserve, preserve that asset. Some of the dynamics changed as well in the past few years with how the agreement is with the operator. And the initial agreements place more burden on the operator to deal with maintenance issues. Now that burden's been returned to the city. And so a couple of years ago, identified a need to start kind of a savings account to start paying for some of those maintenance obligations so that they don't become more expensive down the road. So this level of funding would not, to be a full-fledged replacement of the pool, but there are issues with like the, the pool deck. So we know that we're going to need to be doing a, a pool deck replacement. We're trying to kind of plan that out. So that's the overall spirit behind that project.
Would it be possible at a later date to actually just hear more about the arrangement and what are the revenues and expenses? Is it public, private? Thank you.
Absolutely. We just finished, or we're about to receive our annual report from the operator and we trend, and we plan to transmit that to the council with that information.
I was just, knowing that it's privately run, I'm, I'm just curious how all this breaks down.
Any other questions about any of the other items on the CIP list? Okay, with that, we're going to go ahead and open public comment. Please remember though, the question before us is shouldn't items stay on the list or, and is the tiering correct? That's what we're drilling down on today. Is an item on the list? Should an item stay on the list or, or do you have an issue with the tiering? If you guys could just go ahead and line up, it's going to make it easy, easier. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teri Upendio. I lived in Menlo Park since 1993. The last 10 years, I've lived in Bellhaven. Previous to that, I lived in the Willow's neighborhood. I'm speaking as a citizen from the Bellhaven perspective, specifically with regards to streets and sidewalks. There's some recommendations I have that would probably be a tier three from what I've heard Justin present. It can take in the morning to get my daughter to Hillview or to go to work, sometimes 20 minutes to go down New Bridge to get to Willow. A lot of the impact is because of the way the lanes are marked to turn right or head west on Willow. There's only one lane to do so. And what happens is sometimes only one or two car is able to make the right-hand turn because of the way the lanes are marked, but also because of the frontage road there, you have to allow traffic from, coming from East Palo Alto to make a left-hand turn. It is very dangerous. There's a lot of pedestrians that I honestly, I can't believe we haven't had a fatality so far. But also, so there's, there's like safety issues, but there's also for traffic efficiencies when only two, two, three, four cars can get through one traffic light at a time. It can take 10 to 20 minutes to get out of Bellhaven. So I would look at possibly, I'm not sure how to resolve that, but I just wanted to make that now. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Haas. I'm friends, the president of the Friends of the Menlo Park Library. Among our large number of members, we have about 40 or 50 volunteers who cumulatively put in about 8,000 volunteer hours every year. We raise about $200,000 a year, which goes straight to the library, supporting various programs, children's programs, adult programs, Project Read, et cetera. And all of this comes, or almost all of this comes from reselling donated books and other materials. We believe that a healthy library system is a key part of having a healthy community. We strongly support the improvements to both Bellhaven Library and the main library and we're extremely pleased that, with the council's action last month to proceed with, considering studying improvements to both those parts of the library system. We would like to encourage you to seek out input, public input and participation from all library user groups in all parts of the city and different age groups, different uses of the library. And the higher the priority put on that, the better from our perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder, we're talking about now, shouldn't item come off the list and then also the tiering of the, of the items? If you have a new proposal, we're going to be talking about new proposals or projects later in the meeting. Ms. Willison?
Thank you, Mayor Mueller. So I have more questions than I have answers. My questions involve the appropriateness of some of these items on the list, specifically the ones with regards to safe routes to school. The Laurel Safe Routes Project is one that I showed up two years ago to lobby for. I know Sharon Avenue sidewalks were added last year. There used to be a Middlefield, Ravenswood, Ringwood project on this list. I've, it seems to have disappeared. And I'm just curious, for these types of projects, are we supposed to, there's a dad here and a crossing guard actually from Ensign here and a crossing guard actually from Ensenal that showed up to get some sidewalks and some improvements near Ensenal. So my question for you with regards to these lists and this process is, are parents supposed to show up one by one and lobby for individual things to make it on this list? Is the TMP supposed to be a clearinghouse to organize how those types of projects get done? Or can we have some other, like five-year, 10-year, put everything down and just get it done bike-ped thing for safe routes to school? Because this just isn't a sustainable process. And I have a hard time fighting for Sharon Avenue versus the Laurel Safe Routes versus the what, because this is just not an organized process. And I would really encourage you to commit to implementing a bike and ped network now. San Jose, if you go downtown, it's amazing. Different communities, I mean Palo Alto, they're just doing it. So we've got to figure a way to do this fairly across town so parents don't have to show up on a Saturday morning and try to get their one little street fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bramlett.
So I echo the recommendation that we need, we need a different process here. You know, a shared vision, a shared plan, certain amount of dysfunction that I see, you know, in general. In terms of commenting here specifically, I have a question. What's not here that should be? Do we have a plan to, for all our infrastructure? Or are we focused more on, you know, things that come forward due to squeaky wheels or special interests? I think it's good to start to prioritize, but I think that ought to be tied to broader goals. And I, you know, again, what's here, I don't know, you know, the pot of money isn't, is limited. So what are those boundaries here that isn't here? I do question, why is this Main Library project a Tier Two? There was significant public opposition to the idea of a Main Library building. Now, if the public wanted it, I'd be all for it. What I object to is process. And it really feels like, I have to say, it feels like, you know, we're being driven down a path because somebody wants this. And the justification that was in the project plan, I question that, because that Godey Research Poll showed inadequate support for a bond measure, and many people objected to the push-pull questions. And, you know, just people coming forward objected. So again, if people, if the public wants this, I'm all for it. But if they object, why do these projects continue? Finally, to the point that Councilmember Nash made, I think we need a performance audit of the Burgess Pool Agreement or of our aquatics program. There was significant public concern raised when that contract was renewed, and I think it's time to start having these audits, especially of our public-private partnerships such as this one.
Thank you, Ms. Corman.
Hi, I'm Monica Corman, and I'm speaking here as both a longtime community member and also a longtime member of the Menlo Park Library Foundation. I'm very pleased to see both the Bellhaven and the Main Library on the list, as far as Tier One, Tier Two. I would like to say that I really strongly support, including a continuation of the library system improvements projects, which includes a new Bellhaven branch and a new Main Library and other facilities improvements. Years of work has already gone into these projects, both of them, and they are vital components of the culture and character of Menlo Park. At the January 15 council meeting, you voted to continue them, which we thank you for, and I urge you to include them in the 2019 list of goals together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, excuse me. Hello, Elise Stein, longtime resident of Menlo Park and the Menlo Park Library Foundation. First, I want to thank you for putting the library system improvements plan, approved it on January 15th, so we fully support that. I'm glad to see them both showing up, the Bellhaven as well as the Main Library improvements showing up for 2019 on the work plan. The fact that they, the Main Library improvements have been on the agenda with former town councils does not make the needs any less pressing. We're at capacity with that library, the Main Library, and we need to address that through one means or another. Bellhaven, of course, we need a new library there as well. So I'm glad to see both on the agenda. And we speak to library improvements because it's library system improvements across the board. We need to address them both. So I urge you to keep them on the work plan. The tiers are new to us, not quite prepared to speak to them this morning, but I'm glad to see them both on the work plan, and we'll look forward to future developments. Thank you.
Mayor and councilmembers, Alan Bedwell, I'm a resident of Menlo Park and here representing today Friends of Bedwell Bayfront Park, a nonprofit organization that's committed to the future of Bedwell Bayfront Park and its resource the city as a recreational and open space experience, not only for residents of Menlo Park, but also for the surrounding region. Very quickly, in reviewing the, the tiering process and priority process for the park, we're pleased to see that you've got the Lichate and methane collection system schedules a Tier One project. However, quite concerned that there is no priority given to implementation of the master plan. For members of the council that are new, we just went through a public process of over a year with extensive public input from members, from residents in the city, users of the park, that was done comprehensively by the Park and Recreation Department. And if you look on page 35, you'll see there that the park master plan implementation is listed, but there is no priority given to it. And given the infrastructure needs, the health and safety needs out there, including the need for a ranger to help provide for people's safety and for the cleanliness and cleanup of the park and ensuring that the appropriate recreational activities are going on out there, we really feel very strongly, as this group, the organization Friends of Bedwell Bayfront Park, that you established this as a Tier One priority for implementation of the master plan. Thank you very much.
Hi, Katie Beruzzi, Complete Streets Commission. I noticed on here, on the streets and sidewalks thing, that street resurfacing is a huge priority and that Santa Cruz and Middle Avenue is in particular singled out for this, and there's money that you're anticipating spending on that. I've also noticed that, as appropriate, I think you have this Middle Avenue Caltrain Crossing Design and Connection. And I'm just hoping, it seems blindingly obvious to me and probably to you too, that we should be connecting the dots and thinking about what we need to do to make Middle Avenue a safer, a truly safe route to school as we're resurfacing, because it would be a bummer to spend a lot of money resurfacing only to have to add things later that we're going to make that connection better. So I just want to flag that for you. I'm sure our wonderful staff are on it, but that is a top priority of Complete Streets Commission moving forward, so we hope that you'll remember that. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Katie Hadrowich. I'm a 19-year resident of Menlo Park. I'm on the library commission. I'm coming to you directly from an exercise class at the Burgess Rock Center, which I appreciate the close proximity to. I am appreciative that the libraries are being given consideration. I would love to see both the Bellhaven and the Burgess Main Library as a Tier One priority for your work plan. Burgess and Bellhaven both need to be adequately addressed. Bellhaven needs to have a library that's available to adults during the day. There's so much that needs to be done in that neighborhood. But to look at our Burgess Library as well and consider what needs to be done for, as a 21st century library, in our downtown area that we're hoping to rebuild, so close to the Caltrain, walking distance from the high school. There is not adequate children or teen space there. We don't have adequate meeting space there. So I do think that it's important to look at this as a full system improvement for our growing city, and I ask that you consider all of the library needs as Tier One and look at it in a holistic way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Julie Shanson. I've been a Menlo Park resident since 2002. I want to echo the comments of Jen Wallison and Lynn Bramlett, that this process needs a little bit of help. It would really be nice if not just tiering, but also sort of a little bit of strategy went into how we're supposed to look at the city's goals and priorities. One of the things that's interesting about Menlo Park, and I'm not so proud of, is the disparity between the neighborhoods. And I think that it would be useful to look at setting the bar pretty high. We've set the bar high for environmental building in the M2. We've set the bar high for how high, literally, buildings can go. Nothing on the work plan says, "Let's look forward and be a leader." Let's look forward and be a leader in government transparency. Let's look forward and be a leader in beautiful streets, accessible sidewalks, wonderful libraries. Let's look forward and be a leader in housing. Right? So, just even at that level, when I look at this list, it's really hard for me. I think, why do we need nicer landscaping at the library when we are missing some really important things? So, transparency and equity. If we're going to bury utility lines in parking lots, let's bury them in the whole town. Thank you.
Quite good afternoon, Adina Levin. The first two comments are, I'm going to make are representing Complete Streets and also the Menlo Together Group. And my second two comments are going to be as an individual. So I see that, like, the parking garage shows up on page 37, and this is where the words matter, because it is called out as a parking garage. As someone who's recommending reframing it for the Complete Streets, personally, I don't think that that means a parking garage should be off the table. I think that we should be looking comprehensively with a parking garage maybe as part of the solution, but not the first thing that we should be thinking about. And then, maybe it says yes, maybe it says, you know, no, or do it later. So I think that's where words matter, and calling it a parking garage means it's about a parking garage. So reframing it really needs to be in the words, number one. Number two, speaking on the prioritization on the Complete Streets, and we saw that in the Transportation Master Plan, we're looking at these piecemeal. I would love to see us have a goal to have a network of Complete Streets and safe routes around the city, and then work stepwise to get it route by route and not just segment by segment. And that's a Complete Streets and a Menlo Together recommendation. Next, as an individual, I see that the Dumbarton is Priority Three, and that is coming forward by, you know, regional forces, so I think it needs to be upleveled. El Camino crossings has been on here for years since the downtown plan has been there, and nothing has happened. And we have a safety problem and a convenience and quality of life problem. I would like to see that upgraded. Lastly, I'm not an expert, but I'm seeing stormwater and green infrastructure as two different categories, and I'm wondering whether, given state-of-the-art, whether those things should be merged, and top cities like Seattle and Philly are looking at them together. Thank you.
Fran Dean, Chamber of Commerce. Parking, our favorite subject. Something that's under streets and sidewalks that has no tier listed is parking plazas seven and eight, the renovation of those plazas. Neither of those plazas were targets for a potential parking structure, should there ever be a parking structure. They are shown as unfunded in future years, 2020 to 2021, or 2021 to 2022. They are in disrepair now. They are huge potholes. They can't even deal with just slurries of resurface. They need to be done, and it is a safety hazard. So please, let's move them in.
Pamela Jones. I'm speaking as a resident. I do support Menlo Together, the comments, individuals, as well as the letters submitted. I also support comments made by Complete Streets commissioners, as well as the majority reports coming through the Complete Streets. My comment is around traffic and transportation. It seems to me that traffic and transportation in Menlo Park is a catastrophic event. It's not something that we can delay for future, I'm going to wait until there's some legislation and money coming from some bond that was approved, and which money in the past does not come from that bond to do anything that was supposed to accomplish. But I would suggest that all items under traffic and transportation on page 38 become Tier One. It's 3.071-plus million dollars for the, all of those projects, with the exception of including Middlefield Road and the Lynnfield Drive, Santa Monica Avenue crosswalks improvements. We cannot delay in dealing with our transportation and traffic catastrophic event in Menlo Park. The money is there, we just have to have the will to put it in the place that's needed most. Thank you.
Hello, I'm late with my card here. I'm Michelle Tate, resident of Bellhaven, neighborhood of Menlo Park. And I have just a couple of questions about the whole list, and really whether or not we're evaluating where we can put housing in all the city-owned properties and throughout the city, of course, on both sides. And I'm really interested in the specific plan, and hopefully it'll be prioritized high as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. It's noon, and I'm wondering what time we're breaking for, if there's a set time, we think food's arriving for lunch.
So we initially planned to break at noon for about 15 minutes. The thought is that we would grab food and then reconvene so that we could work through lunch, so to speak.
Okay. I'm going to make us go just a little bit longer, because I want to hear from, from Mr. Murphy and from staff collaboratively, what your recommendations are in terms of this list, in terms of tiering. I also want to ask clarifying question, I think it's helpful for both the public and for council. I believe that tiering has to do with a number, while it reflects council priority, it also reflects whether or not a project is achievable within that year, or whether or not there's like a condition precedent, such as funding or something else affecting it, such that it would be tiered lower until that was identified. So, number one, is that understanding correct? And then number two, hearing from staff collaboratively, looking at the list, do you guys have recommendations for us of what you think, how you would, how you would affect it, before we go around and talk about it? It would be helpful. And if you guys want to take a break first, since I sprung it on you, I appreciate that completely. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, so just to clarify for people in terms of the tiers, there's nothing mathematical to it. There's nothing that you'd point to exactly how it was computed, so it was more qualitative than quantitative. Another thing to keep in mind is, any ones that were identified as not applicable NA were because they are currently not funded. So, but through this process of, over the next few months or so, the city will be looking at what potential projects to fund for the 1920 budget. And so, any indications that we get from council today about that would be important. It's also important to keep in mind, in terms of the city's ability collectively to actually execute on things. So maybe I'll talk specifically about traffic and transportation. There are a number of items here that have been on the list for a number of years, where there's been a lot of discussion for a number of years. And so I can take the Ravenswood Rail Crossing as an example, to be able to kind of bring that to closure, to go to the next, next step. Because once we can actually bring something to closure, it's much easier for us to take on something else, as opposed to having too many things going on. The other thing maybe I'd leave you with is that, in terms of overall staffing, the portion with, we've been very fortunate to be able to kind of retool and staff up in Public Works, but where we currently have three vacancies is in our CIP group, and that's the group that actually kind of executes even on some transportation projects. When it involves concrete, you know, then it transitions to a different group, and we have significant vacancies there. We're in the process of recruiting. We hope to be, be successful in filling those. And so, but that is a major issue, is we have the FTE on the books, we can't actually fill the position. So there is, managing overall expectations of what we can deliver on is absolutely critical.
All right. So what I want to do, is I do want to stop and take a break now, because I think I'll let staff think about if they have any recommendations on specifically to the list during that, during that break. But I do also, before we do, want to just... Uh, but I do also, before we do, want to just make a comment generally that, um, there's been some comments about whether or not, uh, there, you know, whether or not staff proceeds and the, and the city proceeds with this overriding strategy or it's one-offs. My experience on council, uh, the last six years is actually staff has put a lot of time into putting together, as we did today, uh, strategies around all of these CIP projects. From time to time, what will happen is that there will be a safety issue, such as happens with the sidewalk or corridor that, or longstanding issue that will be addressed in a one-off because there is a political will at that moment to get it done and funding available. And we've seen that happen with great success, such as Santa Cruz Avenue sidewalks, Oak Grove bike corridor, issues like that. That doesn't mean there's not a strategy in the city that's being implemented, and it's not, it doesn't mean that there isn't a strategy in the city that's being updated in a comprehensive plan, and there's a lot of those taking place right now. So, uh, I did want to speak in, in, in defense of our professional staff, that sometimes council members, when they, or the public, identify issues of immediate need, and there is funding available, that we will address that at that time. But rest assured, uh, we do operate off strategic plans and update those on, on basis. So let's go ahead and take a, take a, a short break for lunch, and then we'll come back, ask for your recommendations, and then go through.